That's okay. I hereby call this meeting to order. Now, a couple of brief announcements first. We have a lot of recognitions this evening. Please, if you could stay while we recognize everybody else. If you get recognized prior to somebody else, then maybe stay and cheer for those that are being recognized. I will let you know when the very boring part of the evening will be, and that way you can all the kids can take off and go home and get ready for graduation or whatever they're doing tomorrow, school, whatever. So, okay, now, if I can then pass it off to Christina Downey for the beginning, the Pledge of Allegiance. Christina?
Thank you, Joe. I'd like to call, is working. I'd like to call up to the podium. We have a couple of teachers and students from Riverside School, from the Riverside Rangers program, who are going to lead us in the pledge tonight, and tell us a little bit about the Rangers program at Riverside.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Allison Tepper, and this is my colleague, Rosio Montes Gonzalez Montes, and we work at Riverside School as ELL specialists. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. So, we work at Riverside School as ELL specialists, and we also co-chair the Rangers program at Riverside School, which is a leader, development program, leadership development program. It's open to the fifth graders, and we have two of our young ladies here today to tell you a little bit more about that program.
My name is Whitney Martyr.
And my name is Akarif Guda. We sometimes do have some volunteer things, like pledge and some donations.
We help students. We play games with them, and we greet them at the doors. Most of when we play games with them, we have a lot of fun and respect the norms, and we ask questions about how we do, what the norms were in the games, and it really helps them understand how to be respectful and how to be a role model.
And now, please, everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is over there, and I remind everyone today is Flag Day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Christina. That was great. Thanks, girls. That was fantastic. We're gonna now go to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. We have first item, it's approvals as presented. Second item is authorize the BOE Budget Committee to approve all budget appropriations transfers during a special board meeting date in July. And the third, approve the 2023-2024 BOE Meeting Agenda Plan as presented. I make that motion, all those three motions on the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Against? Upstanding. Okay, so that's seven. Oh, no, according to here, six, zero, one. Thank you. Now, we have the student and staff recognitions. First, we're going to begin with the GPS Representative for Connecticut Teacher of the Year, Erin John. Tony Jones?
And I'm gonna start it out. First of all, Erin, I think I, whenever I had the opportunity to give you the award at the school, I really truly meant what I said. It was one of the most amazing early childhood classrooms that I've had the pleasure to be in and really watch for an entire hour. And the children were so engaged, and it was obvious that they absolutely love what you were doing, and that you make them love learning, and they were learning to read. So, and then I was really, I was so impressed when I was there for the first grade to watch them do their show. And it was so, it was wonderful how you were using the songs from the show for transitions in your class, just really integrating not only what you do on a daily basis, but just all of the other things that happen in the school. So, congratulations, and I'm just so thrilled to have you represent us as the Connecticut State Teacher of the Year.
Well, just to follow with the enthusiastic support from the Distinguished Teacher Award Committee, I'm Stacy Loveless, and I have the privilege of getting to award her a wonderful check and wish her the best of luck going forward. But I do want to say just a few words from her amazing nomination packet that that were, that was presented by her colleagues and parents and whatnot. Just a few words. She's been with us for 11 years at New Lebanon, teaching first grade right now. She also taught kindergarten, but in her own words, which I think kind of summarizes her, is she fills each day with sunshine and positivity. And she served on the PTA Curriculum Account, Enrichment Committee as a parent volunteer, and on the Safe School Climate Committee. She's also been a part of the Social Committee, and has, was actually a part of the New Lebanon School Feasibility Committee when we were doing the plans for the new building. She gets high praise for helping all the students build confidence, self-esteem, independence by guiding them to the best versions of themselves. And her colleagues are inspired by her energy, enthusiasm, and general love for elevating New Lebanon School, for the students, for our district, and we wish her all the best going forward as our representative at the state level. So, thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Christine Edwards. I'm the president of the Kiwanis in Greenwich, Connecticut, and for over 30 years, we have been presenting to the person who is our representative up to Hartford, a award from Joseph Kay, who was the president of Kiwanis and also a superintendent of schools. And he wanted to make sure that whoever was going to be our representative from Greenwich not only had the award from the Board of Ed and the Distinguished Teachers, but also from his foundation. So, I am presenting her the award for the Joseph Kay, Joseph Mitchell Kay Award. Let me put it this way. And also, and also a check, another check. And then, Stacy, you can help me with this. This is a blanket, if you will, here, with landmarks from Greenwich. So, I don't want to cover your head. But this is something I, oh, don't, see your face. But this way, I said, instead of flowers, which will only last a while, this is something that will cover you up, keep you warm, and remind you of Greenwich, no matter where you wind up ever. So, thank you very much.
I have to talk. They told me there would be no speaking. Mr. Soprano, it said there would be no speaking. I think he lied. Thank you so much. Is that him back there? Yep. Thank you so much. It's really an honor to be up here. I feel like I've said so many words already. I might be out of words, but I'm really honored to represent our community up in Hartford, and I really hope all of Connecticut and cross our fingers, all of the United States, can see how amazing our community is. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Erin. A win by you is a win for all of us. So, we look forward to our success going forward. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's great. All great stuff. Now, we're going to student government recognitions. Mitch and Isabella. Let's first have Mitch come walking up here, and then Isabella to follow. Hello, Mitch. Mitch served as the Student Body Vice President. You all recognize him from his wonderful presentations, which he's given meeting after meeting, and also he's brave enough to stay for many hours of the not-so-exciting stuff afterward. So, thank you for doing that. It's a pleasure working with Mitch in the actual councils, where they all, all the student government from all the grades get together, and, and they actually take concepts and ideas and suggestions from the student body, and they actually turn those into ideas, and then they implement those ideas into action. It's really exciting watching that happen in the process. Watching Mitch sit in the room, he's excited. You could tell when everyone else is talking, he's just dying to talk. He doesn't want anyone else to, he lets everyone, he's very polite, of course. But as he lets everyone talk, you know he's just about to explode with some really exciting thing to say. So, Mitch, thank you very much. Your presentations at these meetings, and unfortunately, for my colleagues here, except for Karen, of course, they don't get to see you in the council meetings. And in those meetings, it's very exciting to get, know you guys better. If anyone wants to comment or say anything to Mitch, please feel free. He'll be back with a speech in a little bit.
I'll just say, it's been an incredible honor to have had the opportunity to work sort of alongside you, get to know you over these past months. I wish you all of the best going forward to an incredible college that you're gonna be off to and in the rolling hills of the country. So, anyway, I know you're gonna give a speech later, but I look forward to hearing and seeing where you go from here with all the incredible ideas you've shared with us. I know that the world is certainly your oyster.
Appreciate it. Oh, sorry. I should know this by now, right? I think I, watching you guys touch it, and I think, oh, maybe I have to touch it today. You'll hear in my speech later, but you know, those meetings that we have together have really become one of my favorite parts of student government. I think it's always really interesting to be able to have discussions with the people who make the decisions and like are responsible for making change in the district. So, I really want to thank Ms. So, who was there at the beginning of the year, and then, of course, Chairman Kelly, Ms. Hirsch, and Dr. Jones for always attending those meetings and, you know, having a great discussion with, you know, Isabella and I, but also with the rest of the student government representatives, because I think it's really important for, you know, us to develop a relationship, because, like I said before, you guys are responsible for the changes in the community. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mitch. Isabella? Well, I've known Isabella prior to this engagement. I've known her for a few years now, and the excitement she brings into a room is certainly very encouraging to all around. Watching her preside over those council meetings was very exciting. She had her gavel, and she was not afraid to use it. She'd slam that gavel down, but yet have a chuckle or giggle about it. And you've noticed when she does her presentations here, when she presents to the room, there's always a smile on her face, and she predicts, projects the happiness and projects the positivity. And personally, I relate to that. I love the positivity side of it, because that, that's what I like to do, and I see a lot of, lot of that in you. And, and when you take the podium, and when you present to the room, you keep everyone's attention in a very unique way, where you present it in a light, sometimes people, when they present in a light way, you lose sometimes attention, but you have a special gift to actually grab that attention and bring them in. So, thank you very much. I really enjoyed working with you. Karen?
I was gonna say, Joe saw my thunder, but I was gonna say, I have yet, it's fine. I've yet to once see you without a beaming smile across your face. The enthusiasm that you bring to every meeting, to every discussion, really helps to energize the room and the space around you, and you can see it in all of those that work with you on XCOM and also on the rugby pitch. And so, I have to say that honestly, it's, it's been a pleasure to have the opportunity to get to know you. Well, you know, I've gotten to watch a couple of games, but seeing you off the pitch and knowing that you have great things ahead of you as well as, you know, you may not be going up north to the cold, but I do know it snows often in Virginia. So, you'll have a great experience, and I can't wait to see, I can't wait to see what, what you do going forward as well. So, thank you.
You know, that, that excitement that we talked about, that you encourage people to do, I don't see that in the opposition player on the rugby field, which you're about to crush them. So, I see little of that, but please.
Well, you guys are obviously flattering me right now. I can't thank you all enough. It's been such a pleasure, speaking every month, getting to know all of you, and just for you all being very receptive to what we have to say. And as I said, it's absolutely a pleasure to speak on behalf of our student body, and I've, I've had honestly the time of my life being student body president and class president before that. I love hearing what the students have to say. I love bringing it here, and I'm glad you guys like the smile on my face, because it will continue to be there as I go into higher education. So, I cannot thank you all enough. Thank you for listening to what we have to say, and thank you for always being ones to put the smile on my face. So, once I, once again, thank you.
Problem nails.
Isabella will be back. Now, we have the Spring State Championships for Greenwich High School Athletics. Pete Giorgio, our Athletic Director, will come up and speak on their behalf. Thank you, Pete. You've got a whole lot of champions this year. It's unprecedented amount of champions, so I'll leave it to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Chairperson Kelly, Board of Education members, and everyone here and at home. I'm pleased to be standing before you once again, celebrating our outstanding student athletes and teens here at GHS. Thank you all for taking the time to recognize our spring athletes. The Allstate High School Student, Student-Athlete Association has picked the following student athletes in their respective sports. As I mentioned their names, please stand up and come to the front of the room, and we will recognize you all at the end. So, this year for our spring all-state athletes, we have for boys lacrosse, Matthew Trimmer and Colin Zeller. Unfortunately. Come on up. Some of our kids are home, because we still have one more day of finals. Girls lacrosse, we have Cece Tauber and MK Savio. I know MK's here. From our girls golf team, we have Allison Bauer, Charlotte Langhorn, and Caroline McShay. From our boys tennis team, we have Dylan Atkinson, Vladimir Dombrowski, Kai Jan, Rohan Matal, Nicholas O'Brien, and Harrison Wolf. They could be at home too as well. And last but not least, we also have from our boys track and field, Gianluca Bianchi and Antonio Ciccarelli. I think Antonio is here. Folks, these are your all-state spring sport athletes. One more round of applause for them, please. We are also gonna recognize two more state champions this year to add to our list. We just had a wonderful parade of champions brought to us by Chairperson Kelly and First Selectman Fred Camillo. First, we'll recognize our girls golf team. These are the girls that won state champions. They were also runner-ups in the FCAC. So, it was Allison Bauer, Madeline Driscoll, Zara Hillman, Charlotte Langhorn, and Caroline McShay. And then for our boys tennis team, who also won FCACs and states, we have Ishan Abasta, Dylan Atkinson, Vladimir Dombrowski, Nicholas Fruman, Manuel Agali Spekos, Matthew Hunt, Kai Jan, David Keresky, Daniel Lee, Bruce Lunder, Rohan Matal, Ellie Norton, or Eli Norton, excuse me, Nicholas O'Brien, Alexander Salib, Tristan Solar, Zachary Tobach, and Harrison Wolf. Those are your state champions this spring. Thank you all, and we have a long tradition to hold up for next year. The bar is set pretty high.
Our interim AD is doing a great job. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Now, Andy Bramonte, please, for the 2023 Science Fair Award. Andy, my friend, how are you, sir?
Great. It feels so tall when Joe stands up. No touch, right? Is that what I was told? Is it working? Oh, it is. Okay, good. I'm Andy Bramonte. I'm the science research teacher at Greenwich High School. So, I thank you for the opportunity, Board of Ed, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones. So, let me just read a little preamble for you guys. It was another fantastic year. I understand, by the way, that a lot of the, a lot of the high schoolers are home. Some of my middle schoolers are here, which we'll talk about. So, that's exciting. So, anyway, it was another fantastic year in the research program for the 14th year running. At least one GHS student was selected at the Regeneron Talent Search as a scholar. This year, we had five students that were selected as scholars, which was tremendous, and actually, two of them were selected as RSTS finalists, which is really awesome. In early March, six of our students took part in the Connecticut Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, and four were selected to give prestigious oral presentations for their work, much like a TED Talk. Three of our students won their way to the national competition where they all excelled. At the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair in mid-March, 14 of our students defended their research, and an astounding 12 of these were selected as fair finalists, which is a top 15% of projects, and they all went on to win notable awards, including many first-place finishes. In April, 10 of the student researchers and one Eastern Middle School eighth grader, more about that in a second, participated in the Norwalk Community College Science Fair, taking three of the top eight prizes. And in late April, one of our GHS research students was selected as a state winner in what's called the Stockholm Junior Water Prize Competition, which is a, and she's gonna basically compete at the national level to win an opportunity to travel to Sweden and in an international symposium. And finally, in mid-May, one of our students competed amongst 1,200 of the brightest kids at the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair in Dallas, where she, she did really well. So, I'll talk to you about that as well. And finally, this year marked the first year of our Junior Innovators Program, where the eighth grade, eighth graders from each middle school provided the opportunity to come to the high school early in the day, once a week, to create or to conduct independent science research, much like the high schoolers. This year, eight junior innovators participated in CSEF, which was really awesome. And they, there's a phrase I'd like to use, they kicked Tushi, as we say. They really won many, many top awards and three nominations to what's called the National Junior Innovators Challenge, which is the top competition for middle schoolers for eighth grade, much like the talent searches for the high schoolers. So, that is really amazing. So, let me give you some details. Let's meet some of these fine young scientists, and I'll just read off the names. The only two high school lovely scientists I see are Mitch and Isabella, so they'll, they'll be in this story. So, first, the 2023 Regeneron Science Talent Search. So, we had five scholars. Stephanie Chang for Multi-Omic Approach to Host Microbe Interactions in Inflammatory Bowel Disease. Angie Fogarty for Rapid Visual Detection of Alistered Substances in, in Social Settings. Isabella Gega, come on up. All right. For Synthesis of Polysaccharide Encapsulated Hydroxy Appetite, I always think of hunger when I say that word, Nano Composites to Stimulate Plant Growth, Ambika Grover for a Design of a Novel Dual-Functioning TPA and Factor XI Anti-Coagulant Therapy for Strokes, and Rana Gupta for the Design of a Rapid Lateral Flow COPD Diagnostic Via Cytokeratin 19 Biomarker. So, those are our five scholars, and so, round of applause for all of them. As if that wasn't enough, two of them went on to become finalists, Angie and Ambika. And Ambika went on to finish in sixth place overall. I know we've highlighted that, where she won over eight, Angie won $26,000. The scholars win 2,000. The finalists get an additional 26, and then Ambika went on to win $82,000, which is incredible. So, I'm still waiting for my cut from each one of you. Anyway, so, congratulations to all. I know some of them are out there. So, moving on to the Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, we had four oral presenters, Angie Fogarty again, Ambika, Ashley Malkin, who's a 10th grader for basically Identification of Therapeutics for Neurological Disorders through a machine learning algorithm to predict interact drug and gene interactions for the glymphatic system, and Naomi Park for concurrent removal of rising ocean carbon dioxide and oil and water contaminants via multifunctional framework. Angie finished an honorable mention. Ambika Grover was in first place. Ashley got an honorable mention, and Naomi Park finished in fourth. In a poster presentation, Justin Bernstein basically created a functional claramine, a torvastatin-coated hydro, oh my god, hydrolyonic acid nanoparticles for targeted dissolution of other sclerotic, I'll get it up plaque. And Audrey Lynn basically made a new enhanced system to remove ammonia from, from water. Justin finished first, and Audrey finished in third. So, again, round of applause for those, those guys. Ambika went on to the national competition, finished in second place in medicine, and Naomi second place in environmental engineering. Totally forgot that. So, now for the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair, who, a lot of kids in here. So, I'm just gonna read out their names. It's gonna get a little easier. We have Justin Bernstein, Mitchell Goldstein, Zara Hak, Ava Jackson, Lucy Lee, Audrey Lynn, Max Liu, Ashley Malkin, and Madeline, Madeline Minichetti, Naomi Park once again, Colin Reynolds, Caitlin Tice, Ryan Wadwa, and Kiara Young. Some notable finishes in that list for engineering. Naomi finished in first, Justin in second. Applied Technologies, Caitlin finished first, Naomi in third. Physical Sciences, Naomi finished in third. Life Science, Lucy finished fourth, Ashley in fifth. Biotechnology, Ashley finished in third, Eureka fifth. Future Sustainability, Zara finished in first. Oceanology, Audrey finished in first. Naval Research Award was given to Madeline, a U.S. Air Force Award to Ryan. The Association of Women's Geoscientists, Akira, and Colin and Max were other fair finalists. So, how about a big round of applause for those guys? Awesome. All right, getting there. All right. So, now for my junior innovators. I'd say my favorite, but the high schoolers might get insulted. So, the junior innovators, many of which are here. So, if you hear your name, come on up. Hannah DeCruz for her implementation of rhizobium nitro fixation to increase overall crop production and inhibit fusarium wilt. Hannah finished in first place in Environmental Sciences. Awesome. Amelia Fall for Reducing Food Waste with Early Visual Detection of Bread Mold Via a Bow-Dip Color-Metric Card Detection of One Octane Three All. She finished in second place in Life Science and is one of the nomination, one of the students nominated for the Thermo Fisher Scientific Junior Innovators Challenge. Awesome. Next, Bridget Haddon, demonstrating the Persistence of Long Island Sound Polyamatic Hydrocarbon Contamination. Bridget had a lovely day. First place in Physical Sciences, the Pettit Family Foundation Second Place Award, the Connecticut Science Teachers Award, Best Overall Eighth Grade Physical Science Project, and another nomination for the Thermo Fisher Junior Innovators Program. Awesome. Amaya, is Amaya here? I haven't seen her. Amaya for Use of Simple Home Remedy Cleansers to Selectively Inhibit Harmful Bacteria on Classroom Surfaces. Hamaya found some really interesting bacteria on those. So, careful. Yeah, you can find, you know, remnants of lunches from years gone by, just by looking at the bacteria. It's not, yeah. Anyway, Amaya, thank you. She won the American Society of Safety Professionals. Very good. Sarah Ramtula, Does Our Desire for Convenient Spring Water Come at an Expensive Meaningful Microplastic Harm? She won first place in the Future Sustainability Award and Freeman Family Excellence in Chemistry Award. Very good. And Lula Wang, who I know is not here. She made a simple rapid detection of early maturity onset diabetes of the young, otherwise known as MODIs via a random C-peptide biomarker. Essentially, she made a, what we know as a COVID test with the two little strips. She made one of those for something called MODIs, which is like, it's like diabetes, but not quite, and so the treatments are very different, and it's often misdiagnosed. She won first place in Middle School Applied Technologies, first place in Alexion, third place in Life Science, and is the third nomination for the Junior Innovators Challenge. Awesome stuff. And finally, Kate Wick, Wavelength-Specific Illumination of Hydroponic Growth Systems for Increased Crop Production, finished in fifth place in Alexion Biotechnology, got a in Alexion Biotechnology, got a U.S. Metric Award and the Connecticut Science Supervisors Association Award. I know Kate is not here tonight, but awesome stuff. Very good. Almost done. Sorry, Joe. Anyway, the last one is the 2023 Norwalk Community College Science Fair. So we had Justin Bernstein, Hannah DeCruz, Zara Hock, Ava Jackson, Lucy Lee, Max Liu, Ashley Malkin, Naomi Park, Colin Reynolds, Caitlin Tice, and Ryan Wadwa. Just the notables, Justin finished in first place overall, Ashley in second. Naomi and Caitlin got honorable mentions, so awesome stuff for them. And finally, okay, so last but not least, the Regeneron International Science Fair and the Stockholm Junior Water Prize State Winner are both Naomi Park, and I know that she's, she, at ISAF, she received the EPA's Top Award for the Most Advanced Best Environmental Science Award at ISAF, which was really pretty amazing. I know she's already been approached by journals and public, National Public Radio has had her on already, so it's really pretty cool. And she's on her way to Colorado tomorrow for this state, for this national competition with the hopes of winning her way to, to Sweden. So we'll see. So awesome for Naomi. And just one last mention, this will take two seconds, this is handwritten. I just want you guys to know also, it's, it's been very, these kids are amazing for so many reasons. But what's really pretty cool is they are paying the town back in that many of them are promoting science either at the middle school or the, or the elementary school level. Today, I was at Riverside where Naomi and Justin actually put together a six-week program where they were working with elementary school kids once a day, and they had a little science fair today, so it was kind of cool. And I know Zara ran something at the Water Club as part of something called Stem to Stern, where they basically move the Stem to Stern kids into, into science, and a couple of these young ladies participated in that affair, and I think, Sarah, you actually won, so that's amazing. So, so they do so much more, and I really thought that should be appreciated, you know.
Proud Daddy moment, Andy inspired my, my oldest daughter. She's an executive at Microsoft, and the science that he had directed her in is something she applies in her life today, and she's a, a fine success because, and she attributes Andy for some of her success.
I was also going to say, it was pretty impressive to see the number of women we had up here for the science, because we often hear that not as many women show up in math and science, so it was incredible to see all of the, you know, the ladies up here today. So congratulations to all of them.
Okay, now it's the public hearing section of our meeting. It's time for the Greenwich High School Student Government Mitch Goldstein, Vice President of Student Body. It's time for your speech. This is the last one, so it better be good.
Good evening, board members and meeting attendees. I'm Mitch Goldstein. As you know already, I'm the Vice President of Student Body. I stand before you today reflecting on this incredible year. I can't help but feel a sense of pride and gratitude. We have accomplished so much together, and it fills my heart with joy to see the progress we have made. But before I delve into my remarks, I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve as the GHS Student Body Vice President. It's been an honor and a privilege to be one of the liaisons to the Board of Education from GHS. Over the past year, we've witnessed moments of triumph, faced challenges head-on, and learned valuable lessons that will stay with us together through our lives. We have come together as a community, supporting and lifting one another. And yet, as I look back on this year, I cannot help but acknowledge the areas where I still believe we can improve. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion are essential aspects of any thriving community, and our high school is no exception. We have taken strides towards embracing diversity, but we must still do more. We must create an environment where every student feels seen, heard, and valued. So I urge you to continue supporting measures like our courses on African-American studies, or possibly thinking about hiring a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer for the Greenwich Public Schools. I know that making drastic changes in a highly polarized political climate can be difficult. However, it is essential to remember that the decisions made in this very room dictate what and how the next generation learns, and that is extremely powerful. On a different note, as I near the end of my term, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to those who have supported me along the way. First and foremost, I want to thank the members of our esteemed board for their continuous support. Specifically, I want to thank Chairman Kelly, Ms. Hirsch, and of course, Ms. Stowe for attending our student government lunch meetings. Quite honestly, our lunch meetings were one of my favorite parts of student government, and I love forming relationships and having discussions with the people that are in charge of making changes for our school. I'd also like to thank Mr. Silkman, the Head of Student Government, who has been an incredible partner and leader. Mr. Silkman, your dedication, passion, and of course, unwavering commitment to representing the students' voice have been nothing short of inspiring. Thank you for being a driving force behind our successes. Furthermore, I want to spec, I want to express my profound appreciation to our esteemed Principal, Mr. Mayo, and our Vice Principal, Ms. Tulata. Your open-door policy, receptiveness to our ideas, and genuine care for our well-being have been crucial in creating a nurturing environment that allows us to thrive. Thank you for always listening to us and supporting our endeavors. Lastly, but certainly not least, I want to thank my partner in crime, Isabella Gega, the Student Body President. For those of you who don't know, Isabella and I actually go way back, and it's really crazy to think about how far we've come since we first sat next to each other in Descapelli's kindergarten class on North Street. But seriously, I, I do want to thank you for your leadership, your resilience, and your commitment to serving the student body, but most of all, for being my friend for all those years. In closing, as I step away from the podium for the last time, I want to leave my successors Caleb Calland and Omar Galal, which with the challenge. Please continue to strive for excellence. You guys have the power to make a difference. Listen to one another and work together to build an inclusive, compassionate, and empowering high school community. So now, for the last time, on behalf of the student body, I'd like to thank the board for your time, and I look forward to seeing you all at graduation tomorrow. I now pass the mic over to Student Body President Isabella Gega.
Jesus, am I crying? I've known Mitch for thirteen years, the longest thirteen years of my life, and the funniest thing is today, we had this little conversation, and then I forget who turns to us, turns to us, and they're like, you guys are like brother and sister, and Mitch goes, when you've known her for that long, you guys are practically family. So Mitch, best thirteen years ever, man. So I'll start us off. Glad to be here again. Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, and members of the board and meeting attendees. I am Isabella Gega, the Student Body President at Greenwich High School. Today, I have many mixed emotions as I bid farewell to this esteemed public school system that has been my second home for many years. As I reflect on my journey, I am overwhelmed with a gratitude, with gratitude for the support, dedication, and commitment of each teacher, administrator, and board member toward the betterment of our educational community. I express my deepest gratitude to the parents who have also entrusted Greenwich Public Schools with their children. Your unwavering faith in our educational system is the foundation upon which we build our brighter futures. However, as we move forward, I implore our parents to remember a critical aspect of our collective responsibility. It is imperative that we place the needs and interests of our children above all else, free of any personal agendas. While I understand each parent has their own perspective, aspirations, and hopes for their children, we must remember our educational community thrives when we come together in unity, focused on, on what truly matters, the well-being and success, success of us, the students. To the parents, I say, trust the educational process, trust the dedicated professionals who have committed their eye, their lives to shaping young minds, and more importantly, trust your abilities, your children's ability in forging their own paths. To the teachers, I give the biggest thank yous of all time. Thank you, Mr. Silkman, for being the oil of the machine that we call student government. Thank you to Ms. Foster for your invaluable support. Thank you to Mr. Mayo and Ms. Tulata, the two best people to be the face of our school. And a thank you to every teacher who has contributed to our educational experience and cheered us on every step of the way. Through thick and thin, they managed to emulate us into the independent, strong individuals we have become. And most importantly, to the students, we did it. Beyond the confines of textbooks and exams, we've displayed a thirst for knowledge, created a vibrant school community, and displayed perseverance unlike any other. That being said, I am beyond proud to be graduating with the class of 2023. I implore you all to remain curious and hungry for the future success. And as we venture into the next stage of our lives, let us remember that the significance Greenwich Public Schools holds as a vital stepping stone for future success. Mom, Sarah, promise. As Mitch and I say our goodbyes, I am proud to introduce Caleb Callan as the incoming Student Body, Student Body President, I'm sorry, and Omar Galal as the incoming Student Body Vice President. I am confident in their ability to continue our legacy and forge their own path that better Greenwich High School. I am terrible at goodbyes, terrible, so bad, I'll start crying right now, but I'm holding strong. But I will carry the last thirteen years with me forever. I am only who I am because of the district, district's educational commitment. And I promise you, this is not the last of me, but for now, it has been my utmost pleasure. Thank you.
Yes, I feel a bit underdressed, so I'll make sure to come out with at least a collared shirt next time, but. So I'm Caleb Calland, the elected GHS Student Body President next year, as Gega said. I'm honored and excited to carry the torch of our past Student Body President Isabella Gega and Vice President Mitch, continuing to act as a voice for our student body and build on the work they have done, as well as bringing in new ideas to help support and improve the school in this coming year. I'm excited to hit the ground running with the new members of XCOM and see where this year takes us. Thank you.
These have been wonderful speeches from everyone. Everyone, my name is Omar Galal. I'm going to be the Student Body Vice President next year. We can't wait to build on the work that Isabella and Mitch put in this year. And we're immensely grateful to the Board of Education and the GHS Administration for this opportunity to partner the student government with the town. On a personal note, I really admire the work of the Board of Education. It's wonderful that the board takes strides to engage the community. And I'm excited to be able to contribute to these meetings as a representative of the student body. So thank you for this opportunity, and we, we wish you a wonderful summer.
Future looks bright. This is good. All those who have to go because of graduation responsibilities and homework and things like that, sorry, Lil, I always cut everyone loose before you. We have the honor of hearing your speech. But if you have a, an engagement, please, now's a good time to take off. Next is our GEA President, Lil Perone. Well done, everybody. Thank you, Student Government. That was great.
Good evening, everyone, my friends at home, parents, community, board members, Chairman Kelly, Superintendent Dr. Jones. I have a new speech just thirty seconds ago, because there's a change of plans, I didn't hear any announcements, so I'm going to make my announcements. So I'm speaking off the cuff, and that's why the police officer is here in the back of the room. Alright, my friend, thank you. Yeah, yeah. So, first of all, I want to, just so impressive, I wanted my good friend interim athletic director, Pete Giorgiu, just amazing, all of our all-state athletes, our state champions. Town just keeps producing excellence. It's just amazing. My friend Andy Bermonte, amazing scientist and teacher, and the incredible, every year, and I read what the students come up with, it is just simply outstanding and amazing, and I love that the thing is really going to help people in society and in the future, and I remember last year with, with the one with, who did something for his family to help the grow of the coffee beans, it was just outstanding. But congratulations to all those scholars, all those scientists, all those innovators. It is just truly amazing. Never underestimate our, a child or our students, never. I also want to thank Mr. Goldstein and Ms. Gega for their leadership at Greenwich High School. Truly amazing leaders, just amazing their speeches. I just want to quote one of the things Mr. Goldstein said, which was really impactful, and I hope you all really paid attention to what he was saying. Decisions made right here in this room impact what's going on in, in the classrooms. Decisions made in town impact, so we want to provide the best for our students. So when we're making those decisions, you know, let's, let's keep that in mind, let's fund our schools, let's, let's give them the best because they're giving us our best. And then Ms. Gega made a very powerful, impactful statement. Trust the educational process. These are teenagers. Trust the educational process and trust in your, the teachers that are professionals. I couldn't, I couldn't write a better speech than what, what those two comments are. So I want to say thank you to people. Yeah, so every year I say to Dr. Jones, next year's going to be better, going to be smoother, and then this year I said the same thing. So just re-elected, I have two more years, so third time's a charm, you know, so every year's new, that's the great thing about teaching, every new year, it starts something fresh, something, it's just a wonderful, wonderful profession and wonderful to work here. So I want to say thank you, Dr. Jones, we've been through a lot. And we're going to still get it done. We get it done. So thank you very much. And my friend Francis, Francis, our PTA President. Come on down here, girlfriend. I want to thank you for your collaboration, your patience with me, our good times, our hard work together. You're just amazing. I wish you all the best. You're official GEA member. I got your T-shirt, a little, little stress squeeze ball, everything. Thank you. Thank you. I'm good, right? Okay, thank you.
No controversy, thank you. You scared me for a little bit. No, 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 you're good. You're good. You're good. Thanks, Lil. That was great. Thank you. GEA, Lil Perone, nice. And now we go to our PTAC Francis Wu-Nobe outgoing president and John Fisher incoming president.
Thank you, Lil. Good evening. This is Francis Wu-Nobe, mom of three GPS kids and outgoing PTAC president. It has been my honor to work across the district to serve as partner and point person for the fifteen school PTAs and fifteen-plus PTAC council committees. For those of you who couldn't join us at Town Hall on May twenty-fifth, PTAC recognized our outstanding PTA members who, through exemplary achievement, inspire others, demonstrate selfless spirit, and make a significant difference in our school community. This year, PTAC bestowed the Lifetime Essence Award to Valerie Rimmer and the Essence Award for Excellence in Volunteerism to Kate Elliott Bocassi. Fellow nominees were Carrie Bisbee, Christina Broderick, Carrie Bruce, Angie Hardafillis, who you've seen many times here, Leila Horn, Anne Rockle, Maureen Harper, Michelle Horgan, Jeanette Liel, Janet McMahon. Jeanette Liel, Janet McMahon, and Dawn Wistrand. One of the nominees humbly said, "I really don't think I can, can compete with the many other volunteers out there. I normally just pick up the odd jobs our, no one else wants to do." For which we say a sincere thank you. Three cheers to our PTAs who make balloon arches, plant flowers, pick up ice, secure permits, plan field trips, write newsletters, host webinars, fundraise, learn Robert's rules, and our all-time favorite, attend Board of Education meetings, hours of Board of Education meetings. Thank you to our PTA army of volunteers, including the volunteers to my left and right, who do so much for our schools. I was so pleased to ring out the school year at our first in-person year-end celebration since the pandemic, and I was especially delighted to hear several say that it wasn't the stuffy affair they were expecting. Because as I said that night, this work is supposed to be fun. We do this work for the smiles. We will soon post our PTAC annual report, including our district compilation video, and you will see the smiles of the kids. Turning to work, turning to tonight's consent agenda, PTAC advocates for number one, our school buildings and our grounds, specifically OGS and CMS. It's time to put a shovel in the ground. Around and around in circles, and the costs just go up and up. At this time, it really seems unlikely that even those kids entering kindergarten this year will have a chance to go to a school in safe, code-compliant, and education-ready schools. It's depressing. It's exhausting. PTAC continues to advocate for our students and to advocate for investment in infrastructure, which will stand long after today's back and forth. Number two, our school superintendent. Please extend Dr. Jones's contract and maintain consistency in this district. We all remember the long parade of superintendents who rapidly turned over before Dr. Jones. Dr. Jones arrived in July twenty nineteen and has been a steady guiding hand on the district since. Upon taking the superintendent role, she immediately had to shepherd the district through a worldwide pandemic, rolled out K to twelve remote and hybrid learning, managed through multiple building calamities, and kept our academics strong and our school doors open. Under her leadership, the curriculum has been standardized and enhanced. The GPS's third-party ratings have improved. GPS has become an employer of choice for professional educators. In addition, Dr. Jones has been an excellent communicator with the community, welcoming our questions and considerate of our suggestions. We asked the board to extend Dr. Jones's contract and stop the rabble-rousing. And lastly, but most importantly, number three, our students. As we send off our stu, seniors tomorrow and take a moment to watch our preschoolers, fifth graders, and eighth graders move up, please take to heart the words of wisdom you hear. Kindness, empathy, teamwork, resilience, creativity, compassion, leadership, friendship. The mission of Greenwich Public Schools is to educate all students at the highest levels of academic achievement, to enable them to reach and expand their potential, and to prepare them to become productive, responsible, ethical, creative, and compassionate members of society. I'm honored the part that PTA can play in that process. Now, it's time for me to hand the mic over to incoming PTAC president John Fisher. As I depart, I leave you and the public comments to follow with wisdom from the North Street School kids who performed in the PTA performance of Madagascar. Take a moment to breathe in. Uh, it'll help if you sing. Relax, be cool, chill out. No, you don't need to shout. Relax, be cool, chill out. The situation's been heavily overblown. So relax, be cool, chill out. We didn't mean to shout. Relax, be cool, chill out. We can work it out. Relax, be cool. Peace out. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Francis. Uh, and, and, and thank you for being an amazing PTAC president and singer, apparently. Um, and for all your hard work for the schools and for the kids. As Francis said, I'm John Fisher. I will be your PTAC president for the coming year. For all those who heard me speak the other evening, you'll remember that I noted that we will be hearing people involved in the politics of this election year talk about their support for our schools, their support for education. PTAC will be listening carefully. We trust those will be sincere expressions of support. PTAC looks forward to continuing to work with everyone in the community to advance the very best educational experience that Greenwich can provide for all of our children. And that's the end of my PTAC con, comments. If I may, I'd like to have a few, say a few of my own personal comments. These are my own, not PTAC's. Um, I'm always surprised by the things we see and hear on Twitter and op-eds and public comments suggesting that PTAC and PTAs are somehow malicious and malign. There was even something online suggesting that PTAC is a cadre of wrong-headed PTA skis preparing to barge into homes and force social, emotional, and mental well-being on others. Nothing could be further from the truth. I'd like to help everyone visualize the PTAs and PTAC. What we're talking about when we talk about PTAs and PTAC is volunteer moms and dads. Volunteer moms and dads aren't jackbooted thugs forcing anything on anyone. When PTA members put on their jackbo, boots, they look more like this, like puss in boots and kitty soft paws. And we especially look like this when we're doing our parent social fundraising events, which are fun, and you should join them. The reality is, there's fifteen independent PTAs in town, and those PTAs each have hundreds of independent, free-thinking member families. PTA actions are more like herding ducks, if you will, like this. Now, i- if it seems like PTA actions are orchestrated and aligned, that's, that says everything about those thousands of volunteer moms and dads' shared focus on the very best educational experience for every kid. Now, don't get me wrong. PTAs and PTA members are a powerful force in our community. We work collectively, collaboratively. We get a lot of things done, and those things are all good and all for the kids and the community. It's more appropriate, if you think of us as a colony of bees. We go out and collect. In our case, we fundraise. And then through each individual's efforts, we collectively make positive contributions to build our school communities, improve our school environments, and enhance our kids' educational experience. If the bee analogy is taken to its illogical conclusion, it might be tempting to think, well, then, ETAC would be like a queen bee. But unfortunately, the bee analogy falls apart there because, as you can see, I don't look anything like this. But I do like a good cup of coffee and a good book. With that, I thank you for the time. Uh, we hope everyone enjoys a well-deserved summer break, and we can all look forward to the coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and welcome. Now it's time for our community comment. We will begin with uh, Suzie Ponce. Is he silent? Yes, okay, and then followed by a special guest, Sophia Bianca. How cool is that? Bianca, sorry.
Hello, my name is Catalina, and I am in fourth grade. Thank you, Dr. Jones. You're my hero. You saved me from being bullied any further. The school that I am in now is safe. I want to ask the school bosses to please do two things to help kids like me. First, to have a remote class for parents of kids that bully. This way, the parents of kids that bully can learn what they need to do at home to make their kids stop bullying other kids. Second, I would like to ask that all assistant principals follow the same rules at all of the schools. When the kid that bullied me all through third grade and a part of fourth grade found out where my new school is, she tried to continue bullying me. She sent me bad messages with one of my new classmates at my new school. My new assistant principal made it stop, and it never happened again. That is how all assistant principals in schools should fix bullying. Being bullied was a horrible experience, and I don't want anyone to go to suffer like I did every day. I am learning to forgive the kid that bullied me like Jesus forgave his bullies. I want to learn, I want to help other kids to be safe like I am now, but without having to move schools like I did. That can only happen if their parents help their kids to stop bullying. So please let there be money in the budget for the parent bully class. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia. Sophia, we followed by Jackie Holman.
Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, and board members, my name is Sophia Bianca, and I'm in eighth grade at CMS. Well, actually, just a few days from being a freshman at Greenwich High School. My calfstone project was about uh, creating awareness and finding ways in which we could increase resources for earlier detection for reading disabilities. One in ten people, one in ten people are at some point in their lives diagnosed with reading disabilities. Research shows that early detection and earlier intervention can make a huge difference in a school's academic achievement. And for many, it is a turning point in their lives. Struggling students are often pushed through the education system, particularly when they do not have parents that won't take no for an answer, or the student has developed their own com, competent coping mechanism, and so their disability is missed. The board and Dr. Jones should continue to put additional research into um, additional resources into allowing more children to be treated, tested for earlier detection for reading disability, so that the proper res, resources and tools can be opened up for those students as early as possible in order to help them be successful. Without earlier intervention, kids will not, will get lost, and even intervention later in their school years is not enough. They will, they will still struggle and will always be many steps behind their peers. You will de, destroy the chance to ever catch up if you don't make changes in how the district tests for reading disabilities in elementary level. Otherwise, if you identify the disability late, the only person who's struggling is the student. They're racing to catch up with their peers, and they will never win. It certainly does not make for a level playing field. Isn't it easier and less expensive to detect reading disabilities for young, at a younger age, when you have more time to fix it than finding it later and racing to undo the years you missed? Do children, uh, no children with the, with learning disabilities should be forgotten or prevented from getting the necessary resources so that they can reach their full potential? I respectfully ask the board and Dr. Jones, when focusing on the budget this upcoming year, to factor in what it would cost to implement the yearly detection program. They should make a different, you could make a difference in so many young lives and set our academic career on the right track for, for the very beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. I second that. I struggle myself and had learned to, uh, put coping mechanisms in place, and uh, and thank you for that, that comment. Jackie Holman.
She online?
Ms. Holman, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Jones. I understand that the superintendent's contract renewal is on the agenda. And before you make your final decision tonight, I'm hoping that you will entertain the following what-if scenarios. What would happen if an undercover journalist released a video that revealed Greenwich schools discriminated against hiring Democrats, atheists, and recent college graduates? What if a group of Greenwich educators decided to secretly implement curriculum from Hillsdale College without the Board of Education's approval in direct violation of the Connecticut education law? What if a student captured a video of a teacher telling children that sex is a binary and that gender-affirming care is harmful and unproven? What if students were forced to attend an all-school assembly run in by Turning Point USA, where they were encouraged to come out and proudly declare their MAGA pride in front of the whole school? What if guidance counselors were caught giving out pro-life flags and stickers that said, "God bless America"? What if a school employee was caught secretly helping a student transition to Catholicism without the knowledge of their parents? What if an employee was caught recommending books to transgender students about detransitioning? What if vaccinated employees were forced to undergo experimental testing every week to make sure they weren't shedding? What if free Bible clinics were set up on school grounds and outside of sports practices, and students who didn't attend the Bible clinics were shamed in the classroom for being unholy? What if students were told the only resources they could use for their homework were Fox News, Breitbart, and Newsmax? What if teachers used a private Discord server to share scripture from the Bible and promote Christian values to students without their parents' knowledge? What if the high school sociology class taught students that systemic racism is a myth that is used to keep people divided? What if educators were forced to read the book American Marxism by Mark Levin and then required to incorporate the findings into the classroom? What if the media center received a free Donald Trump book library that featured books celebrating his presidency and the America First movement that he built? Do any of those scenarios feel uncomfortable? Because if any of them did, and you answered yes, then I wonder why tonight's debate is over how many more years are added to the superintendent's contract for the sake of continuity, when perhaps the discussion should be about holding the superintendent accountable for breaking the board's policies, violating education law, and creating a politically-charged and divisive environment? I'm, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Joe Solari, you're up next, followed by David Lancaster. You're on deck, David. Come on up. Come on up, join us. It's the first time you're here since our new setup. Welcome.
Good, nice to see you all. So, you know. Good evening, uh, Board, Board of Education members, Superintendent Tony Jones, and, and audience here in. I'll, I'll be brief. I know it is a big decision that you all have to make on, on the extension of, of the contract for Ms. Jones, or Dr. Jones. I, I know how it works in, in business where a CEO reports to the board, and the board reports to his shareholders and, um, the shareholders of the, of the company. Um, just like the Board of Ed represents the, the taxpayers in the town, the parents of, of the children here. And uh, I certainly applaud all the effort the board has done in trying to guide our school forward in the, in the best way possible, and I hope you continue to do so with this contract. And a- as I understand it, you have new metrics that you'll be measuring the superintendent with and, and the school with going forward. And I just here to say, I hope those metrics include greater transparency, a greater focus on academic, athletic, and arts excellence over a lot of the divisive nonsense that, that many parents across the community have been troubled by. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And David, come on up. How are you, sir? Watch the wire here. You gotta go to the other side. Good. How are you, sir? Watch the wire here. You gotta go to the other side. Good.
Members of the BOE. Tonight I'm speaking solely as a private citizen and taxpayer, though I'm on the RTM from District 12. I'm asking the, this board not to renew Dr. Jones' contract as superintendent of schools. The reasons are many, but primarily, one, the continued presence of social engineering and curriculums, a lack of transparency and respect for parental rights, academic results, and discriminatory hiring practices. Superintendent Jones repeatedly says Greenwich Public Schools do not teach critical race theory. This is only a proximate truth, more like a sin of omission, or a Jesuit would call a mental reservation. Either way, the intent is to deceive. The fact of the matter is Dr. Jones doesn't need to promote classical CRT. If she can till the academic soil using its many intellectual capillaries like social emotional learning, this is what she has done. She also promotes radical gender ideology. As one example, just last month, the ninth-grade class at Greenwich High School was shown a radical gender film in health class. Parents who opt, who opted out of this were shocked to learn their opt-outs were not honored. Parental rights were violated. No answers as usual were forthcoming from the administration. This is why FOIA requests have skyrocketed during her tenure. The lack of transparency and honesty has, has fueled this. This neo-Marxist poison is evil and is corroding the minds and souls of our young. A toxic combination of gender ideology and race grievance focused on the evil of whiteness. Regarding academics, if you go to the state of Connecticut's ed site, you will see that the Greenwich scores are not stellar, despite costing well over twenty thousand per student. The disparity of student scores from different parts of Greenwich is striking. Those areas with higher scores are such because the parents can afford tutors to make up for the poor curriculums. This has been an open secret for years and I've been an, I'm a native of this town. Math scores at the elementary school level are also down significantly. We are simply not advancing academically for the entire population. As if all this isn't enough, the Boland affair has brought ignominy and shame upon the Greenwich School Administration and Tony Jones, who promoted Mr. Boland. He said aloud what many suspected was occurring. Blatant discrimination in hiring is illegal and in this case, a grave offense to devout Catholics and all people of goodwill. Sadly, the investigations are still ongoing within the town and by the Connecticut's Attorney General and the Department of Education. There's no fixing this situation anymore.
Thirty seconds.
To quote Churchill in reference to a political opponent, Dr. Jones is like a bull who carries her own china shop with her. Th- this decision may be difficult for some of you who have developed a close working relationship with her. Yet those of us who work in the private sector must do this all the time with those who make a lot of money and don't perform on matters less important than the education of the young. Let us as a town and community clean our educational house and start anew by hiring a new superintendent who is committed to acci- academic excellence over social engineering.
Thank you.
Please do not, thank you, David, vote to renew this contract.
Thank you. And next will be Amy. I mean, uh, me, what is?
I've been mispronounced.
Sorry. Sorry about that. And also Gabriella Marcus. Fantastic, thank you.
It's okay. Dr. Jones, Chairman Kelly, and members of the Board of Education, we thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ami Muth, continuing PTAC DEI co-chair, and Gabriella Marcus, incoming PTAC DEI co-chair as of July first. We would like to remind everyone that June is LGBTQ plus Pride Month. A time when we celebrate the progress made in equality, diversity, and LGBTQ identities, while recognizing that barriers still exist and realizing true universal equity. What started as a human rights protest fifty, over fifty years ago in New York City has grown into marches and events and celebrations around the world. June is also Caribbean-American Heritage Month. And importantly, Ju- Juneteenth commemorates June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, the day that Major General Gordon Granger rode into Galveston, Texas. The last city still held by Confederate forces and freed the last people still held in slavery, two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was actually signed. These significant recognitions of our diverse American history heritage exists because for so long they were missing from our history books and our broader social discussions and awareness. As we look back on this year, we are reminded of our mission to foster an overall sense of belonging within the GPS community by intentionally building relationships and inviting diverse perspectives to the PTA. We are also reminded that the need for deep EI representation exists because these and many other stories weren't being told. The people weren't being recognized or heard or celebrated. Injustices persist in that darkness. The importance of allies showing up and speaking up cannot be overappreciated. We hope that through educating our children about these and other important historic events and cultures, we can continue to build on the fragile threatened progress that has been made and create a more inclusive future for our children. We put effort in to ensure that our students are being taught a complete and inclusive history and that our teachers, educational leaders, media specialists, and librarians are able to provide education and learning resources that support our students' learning without fear of contri- of confrontation and retribution. We want to assure these allies, some of the most important people in our children's lives, have all of our support to do their job in the best way they can. The small number of loud voices expressing intolerance and exclusion only have power when we let them shout over all the rest of us. Let's instead work to ensure that historically underrepresented voices are heard. It helps us all when we hear the stories of those who have for
Thirty seconds.
For so long been left out. It harms no one whose story is being told. No one. We had a fantastic, popular, family-friendly LGBTQ pride event celebration on June fourth. It was perhaps unsurprising but no less shocking to see the lengths that intolerant people will go to to prevent marginalized members from our town, our community, our schools from feeling, feeling welcome and included. This is today, June of twenty twenty-three, over fifty years since the Stonewall Human Rights Protest. And in this environment, allies are important and their support for our work is important.
In continuation to Emmy and good evening. My name is Gabriella Marcus, the incoming DEI committee co-chair from July first. I'm looking forward to working with you and the community in this coming year. The E I would like to thank Dr. Jones and the GEA for the strong message sent out last Friday against the hateful signs and rhetoric that occurred before and after the LGBTQ pride event, June fourth. The First Electmen Diversity Advisory Council for recognizing that antisemitism is still a problem in our town and in our schools, just like in the rest of the country, and for working to help bring awareness and education around the Holocaust and diverse cultural identities to Greenwich. DEI would like to thank you. The Greenwich Public Library System, in particular, Jennifer Meinhardt, her, uh, sorry, head of youth service and at Perot Library, for helping us build our DEI library to share books around heritage months. Her leadership, knowledge, support of our DEI initiatives has been invaluable. DEI would like to thank you. The Greenwich Alliance for participating with us, EMS, PTA, and the PTAs of its feeder schools to bring Mark Brackett to EMS last fall to share his knowledge about emotional intelligence, key to raising healthy, happy, and successful children. We would also like to thank the Greenwich Alliance for the many ways they financially support opportunities for all of our students to have similar experiences regardless of their circumstances. DEI would like to thank you. The DEI reps across our PTAs who work for their PTA and school leadership to enrich curriculum and experiential opportunities and create ways to celebrate our students' rich cultures by learning from each other and bringing in resources to support that. Equity across our, all of our schools and PTAs remains a priority for our reps. DEI would like to thank you. Members of GPS who have been supportive of DEI and have worked to collaborate with us in sharing heritage information with school leadership and brainstorming around ways to provide diverse and equitable experiences to all of the students in Greenwich. DEI would like to thank you. For those who haven't gotten involved yet, it's never too late and it never has been more important. Thank you and enjoy your summer. We look forward for the fall when we will begin our second year as a standing PTAC committee. Thank you.
Janet McMahon. Oh, then we'll have to go Kara Filbin. Is Kara here or is she online?
Ms. Filbit is online. She has been, uh, here talking his turn on.
Hello, hi. Hi, I'm Kara Philbin. I'm RTM District Ten Education Committee, but I am speaking, um, on my own behalf. Uh, too much emphasis on other and too many initiatives that distract from the primary goal of educating our children is directly reflected in the data. Overall, the district is trending down. U S News and World Reports changed our ranking from seventh to ninth. I've heard too many times that we cannot be compared to other communities because of our diversity. This is not true. All students are capable of achieving when properly set up for success. In fact, the current Connecticut seventh-ranked school is ninety-nine percent minority and number two is seventy-eight percent minority compared to our thirty-eight percent. Greenwich's top scorers are leaving, explaining the drop in scores at all of our middle schools. In many cases, the West Side schools are achieving far less than the East Side. Of our five magnet schools, despite extra federal funding, only ISD is performing well. Our STEAM Hamilton Avenue Magnet is only scoring thirty-five point seven percent in science. In ELA, nine out of fourteen schools experienced a decline. With the exception of five schools, math scores have decreased in some cases significantly. Uh, COSCOB decreased by twelve points with only sixty-two percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. Last year's third and fifth grader, third through fifth graders, received little to no learning loss intervention. These fifth grade scores fell six points to seventy-five percent ELA and sixty-five percent math. A twenty-twenty-one superintendent directive to only do homework, to only give homework as necessary resulted in too little practice time for math. Sixteen million in ARPESR federal dollars for learning loss was not properly allocated as evidenced by these poor, by these, this poor performance. And certainly not warranting a raise considering Dr. Jones is already the highest-paid town employee. This is unacceptable. The Board of Ed needs to start doing their job, working together, and fix this. You cannot solve ideological differences and it is not your job. The common ground is more direct instruction, less technology use, especially in the younger years, and a focus on academics first. It is absolutely time to respect all parents by mandating opt-in for all controversial programming. Thank you.
Janet McMahon, come on up. It's your turn.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Jones and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. While I'm a member of the RTM, I'm speaking tonight as an individual and as a taxpayer and public school parent. They say that third time's a charm, so I'm hoping that tonight you will again support and re-reaffirm your vote in favor of the central middle school ed specs. As you're aware, these ed specs have been carefully and thoughtfully created with the input and buy-in of most, if not all, CMS educators, administration, and staff. These individuals do not have any political agenda or motives. They just want to deliver high-quality education to our students in next-generation classrooms. These ed specs also seek to maintain the rigorous academic standards that both Greenwich taxpayers and parents want and expect. Further diminishing these specifications will negatively impact our educational standards and therefore prop- property values. I attended my daughter's moving-up ceremony at North Street School earlier today, so I have an incoming central middle schooler again. I want to make you aware that there are many of us in the parent community that are rightfully anxious about the timing of the school's construction since the structural fixes made last year are only in short-term fixes. Therefore, we also respectfully request that construction begin as soon as possible. Let's not waste any more precious time and potentially close down CMS to shore it up again. Let's build a high-quality, brand-new central middle school quickly and efficiently. That starts with your vote tonight. Please vote yes a third time, a third time on the central middle school ed specs as written in August and revised in April. I would also like to address another item on tonight's agenda. The contract extension of our wonderful, extremely effective, hard-working, and dedicated superintendent, Dr. Tony Jones. I was here before you back in May twenty twenty-one to voice my support then, and I come back here tonight to voice my unequivocal support again. During my nine years in the Greenwich Public Schools, I've seen four superintendents come and go. Dr. Jones has not only stood the test of time, but a global pandemic, countless school shootings across the country and scares close to home, budget cuts, multiple building closures, and a thankfully short bus strike, and more. Dr. Jones has managed all of these obstacles with aplomb
Thirty seconds.
while always being empathetic and forthcoming with information to the GPS community at large. During her four-year tenure at GPS, our academic rankings have incl- improved drastically on niche.com, U S News and World Reports, and Public School Review. In fact, according to niche.com, we are now ranked third in the best school districts in Connecticut and third in the districts with the best teachers in Connecticut. That is in large part due to Dr. Jones's thoughtful and visionary leader, leadership. Um, and the, um, we've been infinitely lucky to have Dr. Jones at our house. Thank you.
Jen Ben, you're up.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, and guests. My name is Jen Ben Savango and I am the proud principal of Old Greenwich School. This morning, fifty-nine fifth graders sailed on from OGS to Eastern Middle School. Being an OGS dolphin means that your roots, you live and love by the very special Old Greenwich core values of be here, be kind, be safe, and be gentle. You work hard to achieve your personal goals while celebrating the success of those around you. We are so proud to send them off with a strong academic foundation, sense of self, and as advocates for their community. As the advocate for my entire OGS community, I'm here this evening to ask for your continued support for our school building renovation project. Later this evening, you will hear from our dedicated building committee chair and professional team about the detailed estimates developed for our project. I want to take a moment to thank our entire volunteer committee for meeting at seven AM, sometimes seven PM, sometimes on weekends, in person, Zoom, from afar while on business and pleasure in Japan, London, California, and Chile. Our committee has dedicated fifty meetings and countless hours for the betterment of the Old Greenwich School and community. The presentation will highlight the efforts taken to address the immediate needs necessary to establish a safe, secure, and accessible school for all in Old Greenwich. I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Jones for her efforts to prioritize the needs of our school community and that of my colleagues. Dr. Jones is a hands-on superintendent who has always had the best interest of the school's staff and students at the forefront of her mind. Just last week, as the red haze spread from Canada through Greenwich, she called me throughout the afternoon to ensure our one-hundred-twenty-year-old school was faring well with the dropping air quality both inside and outside of our building. She was concerned for the safety of my students and my staff. Having worked for seventeen, yes, seventeen superintendents in twenty-five years in Greenwich, it is comforting to know she will always answer the phone and thoughtfully respond to the needs of our special school by the shore. The ongoing support of our building committee, the Board of Education, and Dr. Jones are deserving of the greatest Old Greenwich award we have, the Old Greenwich School Dolphin Award for living our core values with dolphin pride.
Thirty seconds or are you, that's up?
Thank you, Jen Ben. Claire Kugalan. She's not here. She online? She's online.
Go ahead, Claire.
Good evening. Um, Claire Get- Claire Kugalan. Um, I'm speaking tonight as a community member, a taxpayer, um, a Greenwich parent. Um, wanted to talk about a few different things. Uh, I support the contract extension for Dr. Jones and just to remind people that, um, before Dr. Jones, the communication, I mean, the communication we get from Dr. Jones is unparalleled. Uh, the weekly messages, all of the publications that have been put together during her tenure to really keep parents as informed as they to really keep parents as informed as they want to be, and I appreciate that. I also want to indicate my support for the Old Greenwich Project, but I want to turn my attention to the CMS ed specs. You know, now is the time. Thank you to the board for your work and collaboration with the large team of educators who've worked countless hours in developing these appropriate ed specs, the eighty-one thousand five square feet of program space to deliver a building that supports collaborative learning. You know, this is not a supersized school as some claim. And I would like to share something that, you know, multiple architects commented positively on the thoughtful work that was put into the program space and size. And given the bipartisan work on the adjustments to the program space, I know the community looks forward to the entire board moving these specs forward today. And when you vote, vote as is your duty, in the best interest of the students. Children and a school building are not political, and they deserve a modern facility. Thank you.
Okay. Diana Martinez? Is she here or online? Diana? No? Thomas Kenny?
Hold on, Joe. She's online. I just unmuted her. Diana, you can go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chairman Kelly, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. Also, thank you, Dr. Jones, for condemning the display of hate on our town's lawn last week, when a bigoted group who will not own up to their act desecrated the safe space in which we proudly hang our flag, our rainbow flag. Various groups have pointed fingers rather than make a direct statement of support for the rainbow flag and what it represents, but we will need to be clear to our LGBTQ-plus families and children that we embrace who they are. One way we can do that is to give equal representation to all groups in our curriculum and to teach children the story of their people and the ways in which that story intertwines with the larger story of humanity. This is what I set out to do when I asked to read a book about gay pride to my son's fifth-grade class, an obvious gap in his curriculum, even though two of his peers in class have parents that identify as LGBTQ-plus. I chose a historically accurate children's book about the Stonewall riots, which tells about the courageous acts of rioters in nineteen-sixty-nine, which led to the designation of June as Gay Pride Month. But we were told the book did not portray police officers in a positive light. We were given a list of books featuring gay characters that we could choose instead, which we did. Parents would have to opt in if they wanted their children to participate in the reading, and we could only do it in the courtyard unless it rains. I wanted to read you an excerpt from my son's letter to his principal about the matter. Quote, "You say Stonewall book shows, you say the Stonewall book shows police in a negative light, but it's the truth. Police were destroying the community that gay people built, the one and only place they could go to be free and be themselves. The only negative thing about that was the police imprisoning them, not the author telling about it. I think you should reconsider not letting the true meaning of gay pride be learned in school." I would similarly pose my son's challenge to this board. Pride isn't just a flag we wave to create the illusion of diversity. It's a commitment to embrace people who've been stigmatized and marginalized and to tell the truth about their experiences. If we want to avoid incidents of hatred toward the LGBTQ-plus community so brazenly posted on our lawn, we will have to tell the truth about history. We will have to honor our students and their families' identities through what we learn and talk about in school, through the representations of what children even recognize as families and heroes in the books they read. This year's, this year's fifth-grade literature selections were fierce. Ben's fifth-grade class read stories about racism, the struggle of Mexican-American farm laborers. Yet his teachers had to present the option to opt out to parents, and I know they received criticisms for these selections. Teachers have to walk on eggshells to teach what are considered classic young adult texts. I think we can all agree that it shouldn't be this hard to tell the stories of underrepresented and marginalized groups, many of whom are the very students sitting before us in our classes. Thank you.
Thomas Kenny? Am I saying that right, Kenny? It's Kanye. Kanye, yes.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and also thank you. I wrote emails to every single one of you, and you responded and took the time to speak here. I also thank you about that. Very, very big, and it wasn't unexpected. I stand here tonight about the policies the Greenwich Board of Education has put into place that are harmful effect to my family. In two thousand fifteen, my husband and our two children moved to Greenwich. Our children have attended North Myanis School from kindergarten, and five short days will move up to middle schoolers. While our family is unique to Greenwich and the only one like it in North Myanis, having a unique family structure with two fathers was never an issue with their classmates. We never felt any sort of discrimination until last year, when I was approached by another parent to read a book about the rainbow flag that highlighted the diversity in the gay community. Despite teacher support, we were told that such a book could not be read in Greenwich due to BOE policy. At first, I did not believe that such a policy could be legal in Connecticut. In fact, I called my childhood friend, Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysiewitz, who confirmed the policy was targeted and family structure was explicitly not allowed in Connecticut. However, through our efforts, we were told we'd be able to read the book in a secondary school location and then told the parents would be able to opt in their children to hear the book read. In the end, one hundred percent of the parents opted in, and we were allowed to read the book in the classroom. This year, we again approached school administration about reading a book about the Stonewall riots to their fifth-grade class. Again, we have been relegated to a secondary school location, and again, parents have the opt-out in the reading. The Stonewall riots are a critical part of human rights expansion in the United States' history, serving as the home of the modern-day gay rights movement, but also the model of how rights can be gained by all marginalized and targeted Americans. A fact that many Met School members do not know, twenty-point-three percent of Gen Zs identified as LGBTQ. Given this, the introduction of gay rights movement needs to be a priority. The lessons can be learned from Stonewall, and any great movements are especially pertinent in today's America. In states, not only are our gay community being targeted and misrepresented, and laws being passed that aim to, once again, marginalize us, but also worse for our transgender brothers and sisters, who have been even further targeted and marginalized. Given the history of Stonewall, the gay community will not take these matters sitting down and will use our great resources, energy, intellect, to beat back all these laws based solely on these hate and ignorance. Now, skip ahead. Tomorrow, I've given in. We will probably have to do sit- a reader in the courtyard. Truly a sign that the Greenwich Board of Education views gay students, gay parents, and gay allies as third-class citizens. The collateral damage is my ten-year-old boys. I repeat, my ten-year-old boys to the collateral damage. They're so proud of their fathers. They're so proud of their family. They're so proud of their family structure, and this woman sat on public national television, sitting there condemning us.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Let's not get personal, please.
Does it got a personal? It is personal. I'm sorry. It is personal.
Try not to pick people out. We try to hear what's...
And anyone who wants gay rights and gay, I have them here. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Jones, I know we had a bit of a little spillage over there, so hopefully we can recover without any damage. Take your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. First of all, just a reminder, and I know the students have all mentioned it, but tomorrow is probably one of our biggest days of the year, and that is graduation. Really looking forward to that, and it's supposed to be beautiful weather, kind of like it was last year, where it has a little bit of rain during the day, and then hopefully, when the sun goes down, it'll be breezy and cool. So that's what we're all hoping for. Also, just there is a report on here tonight for summer school. I sent some, some of you sent a few questions. We sent those out to you, so hopefully you had a chance to read those. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention Tara Fogel and the work that she has really done, you know, pulling summer school together. It's an enormous job. And this year, we started with the first challenge, and that was just where can we even host summer school? Because we have so many summer projects that are ongoing. And of course, we work with our partners in the town with Park and Rec. They've lost the Civic Center, Eastern Civic Center, so most of our buildings are closed in the summer. So, great job, Tara, and also Dr. Cara Bilo helps her and helps her in preparing for that. And I think when you hear that report tonight, you'll also see that we're continuing to grow that program. It looks so different than it did several years ago, and I think our parents are really grateful for the options that they have to make their summer look right for their children and what works for them. And then I just want to say congratulations also. We have a lot of moving-up ceremonies that have started for our fifth graders. Congratulations also to our eighth graders, and those will finish up. I think the last one is actually on Monday. So, we're winding down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I forgot to mention this before. We are kind of pushed for time. A lot of us, all of us, have graduation tomorrow. So, if anyone has any questions of the superintendent, please put your hand up. Otherwise, we'll go into the next thing, going once, going twice. I see no questions. Now, we'll go to reports of officers committees and liaisons. Would anyone have a report they'd like to give? Christina?
Super, super, super quick. The Havemeyer Committee, which Joe and I serve on, has continued to meet. At present, we're waiting. There's an engineer, an engineering firm who we've worked with, who we've hired, who's doing an assessment of the building. We expect to get a report in July. So, that's where we are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kathleen?
Just real fast, the Greenwich Alliance, the party was a huge success with fifty avid alum, avid educators, and many community supporters, including Dr. Jones and Chair Kelly. They officially launched the Avid Success Alumni Association. Today, they were awarded their first CIP check from the Greenwich United Way for their avid success transition to college summer program. And tuning into music recital was last week at Western Middle School. Fifty students performed for proud parents. They're graduating. Two students who've received these free lessons for seven years and have been playing at Greenwich High School. School psychologists Alina and Fabian were busy this week with two Dare to Care programs. This is a continuing grant from the Alliance. The programs include a performance by Rinro students to preschoolers at New Lebanon about friendship and a mindfulness retreat this past weekend for children and parents.
Next. Michael?
So, the Research Edge Conference, Dr. Jones was able to identify a new date. Recall, we had some issues with the first date, so right now, and we got confirmation today that we are targeting April sixth of next year to host the Research Edge Conference at Greenwich High School. Excited about that, and more work on that over the summer and the fall.
Great work. That's great work. Anybody else? I will talk quick about the Building Committee nobody talks about, which is the JC Building Committee. We are about to sign a contract with the, if we haven't done already, with the architect to design the elevator, which could access all three floors. But that's part of the debate, whether it's only two floors or three floors, making the second floor ADA accessible. We're also looking at or have designs on the entryway, both security and ADA access to the entrance way of JC, and it looks promising. We'll get a lot done in the very near future. Okay, no more. One more. Michael? Oh, point of order, sorry.
So, there's no more. There are two agenda items that have a lot of community members here for. CAC and the Old Greenwich Building Committee. I don't know if there's any more, but given the hour, I'm wondering if it makes sense to move both of those agenda items amended up so that we can then move forward with the rest of the agenda.
Go ahead. Do you have a...
I was gonna say, one, I know is an action item, so I know it's really, you know, not just moving in between, I think, discussion items.
Michael, I think we can move quickly on these couple of items. Can we give that a shot? And then if we drag out, then we'll readdress that.
The OG guys are on the clock, too, so.
Right. Oh, that's okay. That's important. Greenwich High School Entryway, Christina, discussion items?
Thank you. And you know what? Maybe we just move the OG as the first action item at a minimum. How about that? Okay, James. Okay, GHS Entryway, which a letter was shared with the board from our esteemed Building Chair, Steve Walco, who's gonna, I'm gonna drag him. He's here, yes? To fill in, so the bids were, Steve, I'm not gonna steal Steve's thunder. The bids were received. It's a little closer than we had, a little higher than we'd wanted, but I think we, just in the interest of transparency and a community conversation, Steve will present where the Building Committee was. We took a vote this morning to go through the project, and just so the board understands where we are. Steve?
Please, Steve, come join us. We'd always like to have you join us.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Steve Walco, Chairman of the Greenwich High School Building Committee. I see Dave Stein is here, who's also our architect, but I think he's here on another project, hopefully not on our clock. So...
We didn't ask him to come, so he's not on our stage.
And this is really for an update. The bids came in, and if you were around for the Hamilton Avenue construction project back in the day, you know that we started that project within budget, but without enough contingency. And if you've done any building projects, whether at your home or otherwise, you know that generally speaking, you're looking for about a ten percent at minimum contingency, just so that when you start the project, you have enough money for change orders. In this case, our bids, from what we thought we were coming in with, and don't forget, we relied on the values that were given to us on the first round, came in about fourteen percent higher than we had estimated, and we had built in, we thought enough leeway there. We had two bidders, all within a hundred thousand of each other. So clearly, that's where the market is for this project. With that, the lowest bid was two-point-nine-three-zero-five-nine-eight. As you know, we have a total of three-point-five million, if you include the architectural fees, some of the soft costs, the engineering fees. We've already done soil testing, so that was already included. You end up with nine-point-eight percent. Now, we probably wouldn't be here tonight just describing this to you if it was just nine-point-eight percent contingency, close enough to ten. But we also factored in use of an owner's rep. And so while the committee hasn't fully decided this yet, what's likely going to happen is we're going to reduce the amount of time we have for owner's rep. We have a per-hour cost and two proposals for that, so we still have to make that decision. And I think we're going to end up around a seven-and-a-half percent contingency or so. And again, I think this is just the Building Committee working through this, and we just wanted everybody to be aware of this as we proceed down this project. The goal still is, as I like to say all the time to all the contractors and architects, there should be no change orders. But if there are, we'll be prepared at least up to around that seven-and-a-half percent or so. And so we just want to make sure that all of you know about that, so that if there is an issue, especially with soil, and I always hate to say that, but it's a reality in Greenwich and especially at Greenwich High, you know, we have some money, but we don't have a lot of money.
Thank you, Steve. Karen?
So, given the type of project that this is, right? So, it's the entryway, it's coming off of, and it's already has... Probably not the best way to say it, but right, it's got the slab going in, which you'd have to dig up. So I imagine you're worried about what the soil is under the slab. But what I'm saying is, be given the type of project in comparison to other major renovation projects, like we're not ripping stuff down, we're really adding stuff in. Do we think, or do our, you know, our building experts tell us that a contingency of this nature is obviously much different than what we're suspecting to have at Old Greenwich because of the work that we're doing here? Has that been a part of the conversation?
It has, and the two areas of concern with this project in particular would be a little bit of the soil, although we have tested, and we're not going down very deep. To your point, all we're doing is putting in a slab, so we're not, we're not really going down deep, and it's in the front of the courtyard. So, we've already tested. We believe it's clean, and we've already accounted for that, at least in theory. So unless we find some hotspot, we think we're good. The other area of potential concern is whenever you connect to a building, you always have the potential with that connection that there's a field condition that you couldn't have seen, that none of the professionals could have seen or envisioned, and therefore, that connection, there might be an additional fee that might be needed if there's a change order in that regard. So, the short answer is, we know of the two areas that you would just generically know about. We think we have enough money for this, and we think our, even at seven-and-a-half percent, or give or take, is going to be sufficient. I think the worry a little bit is just the dollar amount. So it's nice to talk percentages, but even on, so let's just say it was five percent contingency, just to pick a number, make my math easy. At three million dollars, which is round numbers, the project, you're talking about only a hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's not a lot of money if, in fact, you hit contaminated soil or something like that. So, I think we're comfortable with it, and at seven-and-a-half percent, give or take, I think we're good. It is a smaller project, and you're right, it's a relatively simple project. It's a box on a slab, punch a hole through a wall, and connect to admin. So, yes, we agree with that proposition.
And if I could jump in again, because of... And if I could jump in again, because of, because of the limited scope of the project, we feel there's a limited change orders. There's just, there aren't that many things that we're gonna be able to, that are gonna be required. Like, it's not like when you're doing a ton of trim or you're doing window, you know, it's a very small scale project to begin with.
Right. There's, yeah, there's no plumbing. Well, actually, there's heat.
There's a little bit of heating, but an electrical, but we're tying into existing systems and we have some HVAC. So, and you know, we, again, you know, we're going into the existing office space and doing a little reconfiguring, not big, expensive kind of things. That finishing stuff tends probably to be less expensive than the bigger things. So I think the committee really felt like that it's an opportunity. And we also have some great professionals, an architect and a builder on the building committee, who are fairly knowledgeable and helpful and in the, in the trade. So in terms of our use of an owner's rep, we also have a couple of experts on the committee itself, which is helpful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Steve. That was great. Always good to see you.
Nice to see you guys. See you at graduation.
Of course, thank you. Okay, next, an abbreviated version of where we are with Central, sorry, with Western Middle School Fields?
Yes, they meet on Wednesday, so Dan prepared, let me know where they were this morning. The submission to planning and zoning was separated into two pieces. The first submission regarding soil grading, drainage, et cetera, was approved. The second submission for detail of the ancillary work, including retaining walls, walkways, lighting and plantings, were submitted on June second. And planning and zoning meeting for submission two is scheduled for July sixth. And the remedial action plan addendum was submitted to the regulatory agencies on June second. The initial response was that no additional meeting was going to be required, but they did ask, one representative asked us to put June twenty second on hold, just in case they had additional questions. And construction documents are to be issued on June sixteenth to the team for final review. And notification of the project has been issued to the pre-qualified contractors and vendors.
Cool. Any questions? Fantastic. Seeing up this one, Karen, briefly.
Just one quick question, since I know we're heading into summer season and I'm sure parents are interested. When might that mean that we could possibly have a shovel in the ground?
We really think, right now, it's looking more like August by the time. Because you have to give the construction team time to get everything, you know, pulled together and what it's gonna look like, getting on and off the property. But again, we're very, very pleased with where we are.
Cool. Thanks. Everybody else? Good, move on. Summer school planning. Ann, you wanna come up and do that one? Is that you or is that Mark?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Okay, anyone have any questions? Everyone seen the, anyone have questions for summer school? Christina?
Asking Tara? Tara on the, so thank you so much. It was helpful, Tara. One question I had, and I know this kind of relates to what Tony was saying about locations. I know last year we had a dedicated school where we had students who were invited to their own school to come. Did we look into that? We did, like, what was the thought process? Because it seems like we are not doing that again, and I just kind of wanted to hear about why.
Yeah, we do not have satellite programs happening this year at our Title I schools. And I think Dr. Jones can share a little bit more about the rationale there.
I think Western is one, a building that's closed. JC, we're expecting also big projects there. New Lebanon, I'm not really, they didn't do it last year neither, did they? And I know some people couldn't hear that, probably because it's not on a microphone. They, they were not able to do the deep cleaning last year because of the volume of summer work. So they need the building back this summer in order to be able to get it, make sure they're maintaining the building.
Okay, any further questions? Karen? I'm sorry, you.
What about HAMAB? We didn't look there.
HAMAB didn't do it before, because you have to be able to have enough staff that want to do it and work in the summer. And they just, they haven't been able to have that in that particular building.
And just generally about, yeah, I saw a lot of numbers and stuff, just a general sense of our enrollment this year versus last year. Do, like, where, where do we sit?
We're on path to be, to surpass last year's enrollment at this, at this time. We have a significant, greater enrollment, significant changes at the middle school is where we have the most increased enrollment for this program. And it is important to know that the capacity of our program is often determined by the space that we have. And we do have more space at Eastern than we had at Western last year. So we were able to invite some more students, which means that we have more students enrolling in that five to eight program. We also are continuing a rolling enrollment for all the GHS credit recovery courses. And we don't close that until the final grades are out.
Hey, Karen?
I know one of the questions that I had sent in, I didn't get a full, clear answer on was, I know for students that are invited to the program, we do provide transportation for, I think, is that correct?
Yes, so our transportation model is we provide HubSpot transportation for all invited students K through eight. We provide door-to-door transportation for all ESY students. We provide HubSpot transportation for all pre-K ESY students. And then for our nine through twelve GHS students, we do not provide transportation because each of their courses are a different amount of hours, so it wouldn't behoove us to transport each student based on individual hours.
And so if we have hub locations, anybody who wasn't necessarily invited, but if there might be room at a bus, would we be able to offer those extra seats?
Yes, so we do. So, so if you had a high school course that was starting at eight AM and you have a HubSpot near you, you can get on that bus. And those parents who have reached out have been in contact with our transportation manager. So we do understand the anticipated enrollment and seats available on those buses. And all of our HubSpots are on the website if you guys wanted to take a look.
And I know that this not, does not necessarily need to be said, but anybody's watching, I guess. You said there's still, enrollment is still open for some of these programs and courses, correct?
Our high school credit classes and our math, five acceleration courses for middle school. There is still open enrollment. We do have some spots left. The amount of available spots left is posted on the registration website, so parents would be able to see that.
Thank you.
I see no more questions. Tara, thank you very much. That was great. We'll move on to Karen Hirsch. Could you run the CAC report discussion?
I can. We have some of our, two of our incredible CAC co-chairs. Sorry, Jenny Reynolds and Audra McDonald. And I will let them take the wheel. And beforehand, I just want to thank you guys for the incredible work that you guys have done this so far this year. And know we'll be meeting soon to sort of start focusing on next year and all the incredible things that you have coming there. So let's hear about all the great things you have for this year and looking ahead to next year.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jenny Reynolds and I'm here with Audra Donovan. And we're happy to present some highlights from this year's CAC report. Next slide. We're really proud to be part of CAC. CAC is a council made up of parents, educators, administrators, related service providers and community members. And we're all really passionate about making Greenwich the best possible place it can be for all learners. Next slide. The CAC Council votes every year on what our committee work will be. This year, we chose these three committees, behavior prevention and intervention, consistency and enrichment. The committees themselves are made up of both voting and non-voting members. And all the committees are a combination of parents and district staff of a wide variety of positions. We really encourage you, if you have not already, to read the full report. It's got a lot of details, many examples of staff and parent experiences, and much more detail than we can possibly do tonight. Next slide. So in the Behavior Prevention Committee, we had seven staff and seven parents. And we chose these five areas of concern and focus to guide our conversations and our recommendations to you. Next slide. Before we even began our behavior conversations, we decided to just stop and take a moment to create a foundational framework so that we knew where we were going and, and that we were all coming from a commonplace. So we created this list and I include it in the slides because we're really proud of it. And we feel like just doing this list alone would solve a lot of problems. So we ask you to consider adopting this within the district. Before we go into the recommendations for the Behavior Committee, I just want to make sure that we relay to you that much of our work comes from an understanding that there is a huge paradigm shift happening in behavioral neuroscience. This is coming because of a four to five decades worth of research in child development and in challenging behaviors. And this research is showing us overwhelmingly that the traditional ways of looking at and approaching behaviors are not the be all, end all. The traditional ways are looking at behaviors as voluntary, willful, things that could be corrected with consequences, rewards, other compliance strategies. And the simple fact is that the research is overwhelmingly telling us there's a better way. This better way is looking at research, looking at the behaviors differently. It's looking at what the child's brain is perceiving. And when a child perceives something as threatening, whether or not we see it as threatening, it can send them into fight, flight or freeze. When a child is in fight, flight or freeze, their brain is offline, and this is when behaviors happen. The best thing, the research says, to do when this happens is to help the child regulate by co-regulating. We need regulated adults to help the children regulate. We don't need compliance strategies. So there are a lot of, this paradigm shift is happening a lot and with parents in homes. And it's happening in some schools, and we're asking you to start considering this as you work towards supporting children with challenging behaviors here in Greenwich. Next slide. Our recommendations for the Behavior Committee start with getting some more consistency. We're, there's a significant variability in classroom environments across the district, ranging from trauma-informed classrooms to authoritarian classrooms. And sometimes this happens on a switch of three minutes between periods. That's a lot for a student to try to process. And so we really need something systematic that is common language, common strategies, common approaches. We want a strong focus in tier one interventions, and that would include creating safe and structured environments, positive connections, trusting relationships, UDL, class size and matrix. We really want to look more closely at what we do for those children who are still having challenging behaviors despite these structured environments. Right now, we're using a lot of rewards and consequences, and they're not working. We need to start shifting towards more trauma-informed and restorative practices. And we need to really build in time for team discussion, planning, reflection, adjustments. Right now, a lot of times after a behavioral episode in a classroom, there's crisis management. And then there's not necessarily a meeting afterwards, especially in secondary, to start to make adjustments. So the nervous system is more heightened, the behaviors get bigger, and the cycle continues. Next slide. In order to really adopt this and get everybody on board, we need to have better training, and this training needs to be district-wide at every staff level. This needs to be trauma-informed and neuroscience-aligned. And we have had lots of, I know that Audra will talk about this too, but there have been lots of staff that have asked for training to have more small group sessions, coaching, follow-up accountability, so that there is an extension of the training beyond the initial presentation. These small groups, especially when there's multi-discipline, allow them to brainstorm, to, to trial and, and think through real-life problems and to, to really see what their individual impacts are. It might not mean so much for an ALP science teacher to go to a behavior conference, but when they're in a small group talking, they get the sense of what impacts the, the day in the life of a child that struggles. Paraprofessionals, we, we, we know that they need training. And we have lots of reports that some paraprofessionals, especially the part-time paraprofessionals, don't even have touchpoints with their sped case managers. So the whole year, we've had some reports that the entire school year, the paraprofessional has never had an opportunity to meet with the sped case manager about the students that they're seeing. So there's a lot of winging it happening. And we need to make sure that we're supporting the full-time paraprofessionals. Sometimes do get more time because of there's wraparound times at the beginning and the end of the days. We also hear that reports of paraprofessionals are being rotated frequently at the secondary level. So they're not with the same student all the time. Sometimes they're seeing multiple students at the same time. And knowing what the research is telling us about building, trusting connections and relational safety, we really want to look closely at this. We've offered in our report many options of schools of thought for trauma-informed practices and options for helping these paraprofessionals. From reinstituting the Paraprofessional Academy in the summer, to just even having book clubs to just start helping them have more skills. Next slide, please. Every meeting that we had for the Behavior Committee, we ended up talking about staffing, even though this was not one of our original focus areas. It became a focus area because it was constantly brought up. We are hearing in CAC that staff are feeling stretched thin, particularly mental health professionals and special educators. It's leading to levels approaching burnout, if not already at burnout. And when we go back to what I had said earlier about a regulated adult is needed to help bring a dysregulated child back to a steady state. If, if the teacher or the mental health professional's cup is empty, they're not gonna be able to help the kid. So we need to think of ways to, to look at our staffing and also just look at how we can support and have more support for even gen ed teachers when a crisis happens. So one of the next two recommendation, five and six, are just two examples of things that we came up with that we thought would be low-cost and easy implementation, considering a scheduled CEES learning facilitator in each school to help support that has a broad background in UDL and trauma-informed approaches and is able to coach and help in crisis. We also think finding moments of small breaks is very helpful. This is research-backed. Everybody does well when they can take a breath or get a drink of water or go to the bathroom. So finding creative ways to just bring micro breaks for both staff and students is gonna help just get everybody back to a little bit more level state. Next slide, please. Our last two recommendations in the Behavior Committee are around restraint and seclusion. We've already heard from our leadership in the district that the district does not do seclusion, which we're thrilled about. We would just like the district to take a stance and put that in writing because there is no research that supports a therapeutic benefit for seclusion. And we would like to just make this district policy. Regarding restraint, in the state guidelines for restraint, it says that in cases of emergency where you're, there's a threat of bodily harm, restraint can be considered. IDEA defines this risk of serious bodily harm as a substantial risk of death, disfigurement or loss of bodily member or organ. We are glad to hear that the restraints are going down in this district, but we are hearing episodes of restraints happening from much more minor things than the things I just listed. We would love clearer policies on what constitutes an emergency. And we think that in combination with implementing more of this trauma-informed approach and restorative practices will reduce the need for even getting to restraints in the first place. I'm now gonna pass it over to Audra, and she'll talk about the Consistency Committee.
Hi, guys. So I'm Audra O'Donovan, and I co-chaired the Consistency Committee. So everything that Jenny just spoke about and other stuff we've spoken about on the year is, if there, if it doesn't, is not done with consistency throughout our district, nothing will ever change. They came up with six subcommittees within our committee that to discuss. It was, the first one was variations and programming. Could you switch, who's the slide? Thank you. So the first one was variations and programming. The second one was the staffing model. The third one was the variations in staff training, particularly about OG training and literacy training. Also about coaching. There used to be some coaches. Some of the staff said there used to have coaches in the building, like they might have a behavior coach and stuff within the building. The fourth was communication from the schools in the district. The fifth was hiring practices and turnover, and the sixth was outplacement and percentages. I'm just gonna go briefly over some of the top recommendations from all of these committees. The first recommendation was that mental health and behavioral concern. The first recommendation was that mental health and behavioral concerns continue to be at the forefront for all our stakeholders. This is just, is not just special education, this is general education as well. All the staff require training to proactively address any and all of these concerns. Our special education children are in every class. So this is general ed staff and special education staff really need to have the training like Jenny said, in the mental health and behavioral concerns. The second one is the district needs to keep a mastery inventory of staff training and certifications. Resources, programs, and materials should be made readily available in each individual building. With turnover, sometimes you had a building that had tons of literacy staff. If staff leave, we might not have as much. We need to have a master list, and it has to be available to parents and to staff. So we know what the staff training in that building are, and we can upkeep it. So we, we know we want to upkeep it. We, we believe the district does. If we don't have a record of it, we can't do that. Every building needs designated sensory spaces available as well as special education spaces available. Again, with the consistency, some buildings do have sensory rooms, some people, some buildings do have sensory walls. We want to make sure that every child in every building has access to this. Also, special education students must no longer be taught in hallways, cafeterias, or closets. In the past, our students have been taught in these areas, and other general ed students have not. We want this to be done at a district level that twice a year administrators meet with every building and make sure that our special ed children, special education children are not being taught in hallways or in closets. Continuum of service, services need to be evaluated by district-level special education administrators. Often, our parents have reported that they are told, we don't do that here. One building does it, another building doesn't do it. We don't want that anymore. So in order to have this consistency, we, again, we're asking on an administrative level to check, to make sure if this is reported that, we don't do it here, it's investigated, and we make sure that the buildings are providing the same services. Oh, sorry. I'm on the next slide. The fifth one is building administrators should be able to make recommendations for their students rising to the next level. Often, we hear that we're going to wait and see, which basically translates to sometimes children fail before they get services, especially when there are staff recommended they need them. So we want to stop that. If a child, if any administrator or parent is discussing that a child needs help, let's help them. Successful programs such as Avid and other programs that we see that are seeding in other buildings, we're asking if we can see if we, we know we can't bring Avid, it's a very large program, to another school, but maybe there's different aspects of it that we can. Let's evaluate what we're doing right and transfer it to another school as well and use it there. Number seven, we would like to each, we would like each situation where a student, this is relevant especially for tonight. We would like each situation where a student has to leave their neighborhood school to be educated at another GPS school investigated by a district administrator. We all heard that brave child talk about being bullying and bullied in a school. She's, that, she's not the only one. There are several children that have to leave their neighboring school for situations, for bullying, for other situations that they're, they felt either the IDA was violated. We're asking for the administrators, and every single time a child has to leave their neighboring school to investigate, what went wrong that that child had to do that? Oftentimes, and you, you, you heard it from that brave child tonight, say how great she is doing in her new school. Why couldn't that be happening? Why didn't she, she feel safe in her neighborhood at school? We want to know why, and we want an investigation, investigation about that. We had this written before she was here, so just want to congratulate our committee who brought that recommendation forward. Number eight, staff and parents should be educated on the district staffing model. As Jenny said, again, our committees are made up of not just parents, their administrators, related service providers, and teachers. Everybody is asking about the staffing model. So we, we're asking that we share it with our staff, so they're fully aware of what it is. Number nine, each building keeps drastically different building procedures, record-keeping, and data collection, similar to what Jenny was saying. For some behavior charts, some schools give you a smiley face, and that's what they send home to tell if your child did well together. Other schools will say they had a breakdown because of this, and they, how, how many times they called out. I don't know if it's not, maybe if we improve training, that it will be consistent, but we need somebody on an administrative level to oversee that one school's not getting a smiley face, and one school's getting detailed description about why their child had a breakdown. Number 10. Communication between schools' families is notably different per school. Some parents who are in our committee said they knew who their special education manager, case manager was. They spoke to them often. Some parents said they didn't even know who they were, and this was in January, and they never even heard from them. So we do know its policy that they reach out, but it's, it's not happening consistency throughout the school. So we're asking if that can be looked into. The same administrator in each building oversee similar processes in order to become experts and communicate procedures. You just, we have heard from parents in our committees that when they have had administrators who are overseeing special education, who have had a special ed background, the, the practice has been different, and they have felt that the IDA and their child's, that interventions have been drastically different from other schools. So we're just asking whoever is overseeing sped to please have a special education background and have experience within it. Utilize the data we have to evaluate our processes. We should, we're asking to evaluate which school buildings have state complaints, outplacements, adversarial relationships with special education families. We have schools that are amazing, and our children are doing great things. We have some schools that, you know, are struggling. We're just asking if we can evaluate so we can learn from it. We can say, why did we have this complaint? What did we do wrong, and how do we correct it for the next time? Uh, I think everybody in our committee is dedicated to our kids. We had tons of staff, tons of administrators, tons of parents. We met probably once a month, sometimes twice a month. We're, we're, they're looking to work together. So, and I think we, I have to say, we've come so far. We have so many, you know, Dr. Jones, Dr. H. We have a lot of these policies that have changed. We have a lot of training that has come in, but if no one's evaluating it, no one's overdoing, having oversight of it and following through, then it's just words on the paper. So we commend everybody for the changes we've made, but we want to keep it going and really change the trajectory of the children in our school.
Um, I'm just going to finish up with our enrichment committee. We held two workshops this year, um, for parents and really for staff as well. Um, our first one was a mental health panel with five, uh, GPS mental health professionals. They were awesome. They presented so many resources for families. That PowerPoint is on our webpage and is a great place to direct people for finding any resource they possibly could want. And our spring workshop was with Dr. Jenna Ruffo, who spoke about, um, IDEA, the IEP, and Universal Design for Learning. It was an excellent presentation, and the video is available for another five months on the webpage, and our slides will continue to stay on the webpage. We also started in our CAC meetings to highlight programs within the district for parents. So we're trying to have more connection with parents, and we're trying to highlight all the great programs that already exist in the district. And, um, so we just started that spotlight in our past meeting. We, um, did second step, and we're looking forward to continuing that tradition next year to make sure that, in addition to ask all our asks, that we're also highlighting all the good. Next slide. We just want to thank you for your time and for all the collaboration, um, that we've had, especially with Dr. Haglen-Toller's office. And, um, we are really excited about the work that we're doing. And we, as, as Audra said, we're looking to find ways to collaborate with you in any way that we can to help forward these things and to just continue to make our district better. Thank you.
Um, book, well, thank you guys for that informative presentation, but even more so for the informative and, and really well-thought-through, uh, report you guys gave us. I highly recommend everybody who has interest in this area, take a look at it. I also wanted to make, um, note that there were a lot of things that you guys didn't put into this, that the hard work that's been put in, um, throughout the year. Um, you're, have worked with the district to help create some of the forward-facing parent documents and other support materials for parents and things like that. And I also wanted to note, um, while there are 21 voting members and, um, some alternates, CAC also offers general membership status to any parent or guardian of a child with a disability, um, or previously known or suspected of having one, um, amongst other things. And so that information's all up on the Greenwich Public School website. Um, CAC has their own, um, page under that with all of that information. I highly recommend, um, uh, parents who have interest, uh, or are looking for more support, um, or education in this area, take a look at that because, uh, this group has done an incredible, incredible amount of work in just under two years of working with the district. Um, and I, I know it seems clear we have a lot more work to do, um, but have seen a lot of great board movement. And so I'll just open this up to, to questions.
So this report is fantastic. I mean, the, as, as a veteran reader of CAC reports, the, um, the committees outdid themselves this year. And I think it really serves as a, a model, um, or example that maybe we can use in some other areas. Because obviously, at the board level, one of our biggest challenges is, you know, looking under the hood, right? And getting down to the classroom level and what's happening, only so much ever comes up to the board level. And this is a really great example of talking about what's really working, but you hear some, a lot of really concrete examples of where we can be doing better. Um, so, and I know, and the rest of the board should know, we, Karen and I have had a number of conversations with the CAC and CAC leadership this year about, uh, questions about holding us accountable, like what do we do with this report? Because obviously, there's an awful lot of effort that goes in this report every year. And we talked about some systems of follow-up and follow-up in the fall and some, and, and administration coming and talking through the recommendations and where they make sense. Was it at CAC readings? And I think that's important to mention, you know, at the board level, because, you know, here at this, because this is the beginning of the conversation, um, and has to be the beginning of the recommendations. Then we have to see what makes sense more. The other thing, while I have the mic, just real quick, the, um, um, on the behavior side, which, you know, was so many great, so much great stuff in, in there. And I was so excited to see, because, um, odd, I was so excited to see the, the neuroscience, uh, connections and things, starting on page seven and things. And as an aside, before Ms. Costin gives me the side eye, the, um, as, and as, as an aside, um, um, you should know, I mentioned the beginning, the Research Ed Conference that we confirmed for April 6th. So the founder of Research Ed, fellow by the name of Tom Bennett, um, wrote the book on behavior, neuroscience, and behavior. He is the behaviorist of the United Kingdom. He's going to be here presenting in the district, um, all about, uh, connecting all the ideas you just talked about in here, uh, specific to, to the science and things like that. So I think that's a, a great opportunity for us to leverage a lot of the ideas you're talking about. A lot more to, a lot more to say, I do think it's worth qualifying, uh, Audrey, just for a second. The, uh, when you talk about OG in the report, can you, can you clarify? You're not talking about old Greenwich?
Oh, sorry, we're getting it. It's a literacy, yes, that we just want to make sure that every building, if a child is dyslexic, that it doesn't matter where their neighborhood school is. Every building has the same trained staff, so they can stay in their neighborhood school.
Which speaks to our lovely, uh, younger speaker here about, uh, testing earlier and, and providing support earlier.
And we think if they're trained, they know what to look for, general ed teachers and special ed teachers. So if they all have literacy training, then a general ed teacher can, I mean, even simple things in kindergarten. If a child can't rhyme, that could be a sign, you know? So we, we can do, sorry, more training on everybody in that district.
I saw Ms. Costin's hand up.
So I want to commend you for this report. It was comprehensive, and, um, I really do thank you for it. And I thank you for always making recommendations that, um, it's not, it's not just finding the problems, but also suggesting some remedies. Um, however, I do think, um, that as a board and an administration, you know, the onus is also here at this table within our power to make sure that when we see areas of concern, like to me, I see it as very concerning that, you know, staff are burning out or there's, um, it's, there's a feeling of a lack of transparency because all of that undoes all of the effort that, you know, Dr. Stacy, Dr. Jones, you know, you know, we get emails and, and I think, gosh, if there's a, if there's a family out there that, that is coming to us with a concern, then, then we're missing something. And if they're using social media to amplify their concerns, we are really missing something in it. That perception, that disappointment undoes so much of the good that we have tried to, um, to rectify years of, you know, real failure in special education here. So I, I really commend you, but I think we also as a board, as a, you know, as a district, need to maybe have some more, um, FaceTime with you to, to work through some of the issues of concern that I see in, in the report for sure.
Ms. Downey?
Thank you. I'm going to kind of echo, um, just unbelievable amount of work that your committee and subcommittees put in, and we thank you. Um, I know it's a labor of love, um, and appreciate putting together a very comprehensive report and a lot to think about. Um, I guess my question is more of a, maybe it's a Dr. Stacy question about kind of an action plan and next steps and addressing, you know, you get the report and kind of how do we move forward? We get all these recommendations out, and if you could speak to, like, the game plan, I think we'd appreciate it. You probably need to be on the microphone, Stacy. Sorry to make you get up.
Wait, you put me on the spot now. So as the report comes out, we take a look at it and look at what are the recommendations that we can do right off the bat? So what are the, the ones that we have, the staff, the resources to implement? Then the next step is looking at what are the next, next steps? Many of the recommendations are beyond just my department. So that's working in collaboration with Ann, with Mark, to see how do we do that when we're talking district-wide, all-teacher type of things? So how would we implement those? So it's kind of going through and looking at those, um, at those different steps. And then some of the, some of the recommendations too, we have pieces of that. So how do we get some of that information? We know what we have for state complaints. We know, we, we know who's going where, like, we have that. And then it's trying to balance the confidentiality versus transparency, um, with all of that. And I know sometimes I share that with you guys in the executive session. Um, but having that information, and we, we do take a look at that.
Um, anybody else have, oh, Karen, Ms. Kowalski?
Yeah, thank you. So I've still working my way through the very comprehensive report, and I appreciate it because I, I want to go through it with, with great detail. But I do, one of the things I think that might be a benefit, and I think maybe Laura was touching on this a little bit earlier, is having more, the, the touchpoints comment, you know, having more of a session. So rather than having a bigger report at the end of the year, uh, that we're all trying to quickly digest and to figure out how to, to manage it, but rather have perhaps, whether it's quarterly or we figure it out, but greater touchpoints, so we know what progress you're making and what things and trends you're seeing and what your committees are coming up with so that we can be a little more proactive throughout the course of the year to give us greater lead time into, uh, coming up with action plans, how we're going to resolve it. And so we can implement that and so that, uh, Dr. Stacy has more time to figure out greater, so that at the beginning of the next year, like, we've got something going. So maybe if it's more on a rolling basis, that would be helpful. Not saying that we need the full report at any point in time. But again, trends that you're seeing, updates, what committees are working on, and how you're putting it together so that we can, um, be more proactive in the sense of working in parallel rather than reactive to everything. But otherwise, I thought everything that you've come up with and, and your suggestions and recommendations are great because I think one of the toughest part is saying, here's the problem, now fix it. You're, you're saying, here's the problem, fix it. And by the way, here are a couple of kind suggestions on how you might want to achieve that is a wonderful way and makes everybody's jobs easier, so thank you.
So just to address, uh, both of, uh, Ms. Kowalski and Ms. Costin's comments, um, Dr. Mercanti, Anthony, and myself, um, have met with, uh, the heads of CAC, um, most recently, sort of to have exactly the conversation that you two had is how that, this is their second year, so they're still figuring things out, as are we, as to the best ways for us to work together.
It wasn't a criticism.
No, 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 I'm a dr- No, 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 I'm, no, no, I'm just addressing, it's not meant to be a criticism. It's that these are things that they, as members of CAC, have already thought as well as with us, as to how we can start moving forward now that they've got a good rhythm going during the school year to have more input here. And how we can better work together during the school year as opposed to just getting an end of the year report. I'd actually reached out earlier, we're going to be sitting down and we're going to arrange a date to have that discussion. So we can start some of those over the summer, so that we start the fall off ready and raring to go. So I did want to address both of your comments that we will be hearing more in this upcoming year than we have in the year past. Now that, you know, the committees have, have had two years of this under their belts and, and we're really helping see where they want to go as well.
We plan to provide stuff in September and working collaboratively with everyone and meet with you guys to give you updates on our recommendations throughout the year. Yes.
I just, I know the board is aware, but the public probably is not. But when it comes to staffing and the staffing pressures, we have grown by 180, 190 students over the, this last year. Just in special education. And so we've already added two positions for next year that were, they're not in our budget, but we have to have them. And so we are, I really appreciate your comments. We do have staff who feel the pressure right now. And we're looking at staffing very, very carefully. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thanks. Great. Hey Blaze, time to turn off the Rick and Morty reruns and give your monthly financial report.
Hey, how's it going? At least you don't think I'm sleeping this time, Joe.
No, no, we know you're watching Rick and Morty.
Okay, so I'll be very quick because I know you have a busy agenda. The financial report, it's fairly straightforward. It's May, it's the end of the fiscal year. We've been doing a lot of work, a big thank you to the other members of Cabinet, to Dr. Jones and many of the principals and program coordinators, really helping us clean up a lot of the financial data. That's made financial management fairly challenging and to really give a good picture. But a couple of, of key points, we ended up actually getting the second excess cost payment for special ed and a lot of thanks to the work that Dr. H has been doing. We've been talking about a lot of the stuff she's done tonight. That expected payment actually just came in at about 1.38 million. And so that's over the original like $900,000 that was budgeted. On the expense report, we're really trying to work through the end of the fiscal year. We have a number of budget pressures, but between transportation, the budget freeze and the special ed interim, as well as a lot of the data cleanup we've been doing, things look to end fairly well at the end. But it's, it's kind of a challenging time. We have multiple fiscal years going on right now. On June 7th, we reopened the munis, the financial system for actually fiscal year 24. So fiscal year 24 is also up and running. That is so that everybody can, at the school level, can place a lot of their orders before 10-month employees leave and have the supplies and services ready to go when school comes into session. And then we're, we're closing out, you know, for the June 30 fiscal year. Everything else is fairly straightforward in the report capital. We are really in the time period where we've been working on a lot of contracting and getting ready to execute, you know, significant capital over the summer. In grants, really a huge thank you to the finance team, you know, Pat Marana and Kimberly Castoro and working with Stacy, Mark and, and, and their teams as well on working through grants and coming up with a really solid grant execution plans. Remember this report is, is as of May, the end of May. And so just on, on title one alone, in the last few weeks, Mark's team, you know, Tara, Mike and, and the whole crew have executed really over about $200,000 with us in, in just about two weeks. So getting those grants spent down, you see a significant month-to-month decrease in terms of heading towards that execution rate. The school lunch fund is, is doing very well right now. A major driver of that will now be the cash in lieu of commodities, unlike many other school districts. The town of Greenwich has cash reimbursements from the federal government instead of participating in direct food provision. And it's based on participation, so clock is significantly higher than expected. And just working very closely, we, we meet regularly with the SESS team. We have bi-weekly meetings, we, we meet often and just kind of monitoring the, the, the financial condition of SESS, but we should be in, in fairly good shape there. So that's a quick overview and I don't want to take it, does anyone have any questions?
Christina?
Hey Blaze, how are you? On the last page of the report, I just wanted to talk about, because this is kind of like the transportation update and kind of go into our year-end number. And we have a budget, well budgeted, there's an item, a deficit amount for a federal court representation of $125,000. Yeah, or you could just walk through those, that last chart on the last page. Obviously electricity is our electricity cost, overtime is what it is, the special ed is on the previous page. Substitutes is our substitute teachers, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Those, those are all fairly straightforward and ones that we have, you know, discussed at length. The federal court representation is, so there's a federal court case that involves special education. And the, the law department is our law department. And they are, we have consolidated legal service. But they, they chose to use outside counsel for a specific course, for a specific case. And it was running, it's thousands of dollars a month. And then we were advised, Stacy was kind of advised that because it's special education, they don't budget for special education law, they weren't going to pay for it. And so this was an unexpected expense. We actually still have about $55,000 in outstanding bills to shipment in Goodwin. And we, we, we disagree with the interpretation of the, of the consolidated service. We're working with the Office of the First Selectman right now on this and will likely probably look to the board, the BET and maybe the first selectman at a later date over the summer to really, to really hash out maybe a memorandum of understanding. Because kind of this is, this is a, for example, this is a federal court case. We're being represented by the law department. The, the law department has outside counsel that they brought in and they're running the entire case. And like every other case, this is typically covered by the law department. But for some reason, because it's special education law and we were advised that, that they, they weren't going to cover it. So that's the concern there.
But this is something, have, have we had this kind of issue before? Or is this a, you know, a unique set of circumstances? And, and just, you know, when, when litigation gets farmed out by the law department, usually they pay it, pay for it, isn't that correct?
Special education law would be the only exception. My understanding is that, you know, something similar happened about 10 years ago and the Board of Ed paid for it. And, and that's really one of the only examples. I'm not sure if that necessarily sets the standard. As far as I know, the, my interpretation was that the law department is a consolidated service. Every department in town, if we were talking about being treated the same, pays their own legal consulting. And special ed has a legal consulting budget, just like human resources has a legal consulting budget. And that's the same thing at the town, every department has legal consulting. But my understanding was that typically legal representation in court where we are, you know, being sued would be a expense that would normally be both run and fully managed and then covered by the law department. But in this case, it was not. The concern is real.
Let me jump in for a second, because it's kind of unfair to really put that on him, that's on us.
No, no, I think it's a dialogue we need to have.
Exactly.
Here I was going.
No, no, 100%. And that dialogue has started.
Yeah, because my concern was, do we even have the 50,000? You said we're still in the hole to pay.
Right, which we have to talk to the.
We're, we're gonna, Joe, you, you ended this on the way I was gonna end it too, which is that.
Great minds think alike.
Yeah, exactly. No, this, this is a, it's one where we're going to have an open conversation. Everyone's actively at the table. It's, there's an ongoing concern because this case could go to the next level of court and the next level of court. So this could be an ongoing something, for an example, and this could be many other examples. And so that's why we have an MOU with Parks and Recreation that spells out every single consolidated service and who is, who does it? Who pays for it? And so the thought here with the First Selectman's office is to do that for all of our consolidated services, the law department, town finance, and maybe go through each one of these and have a similar MOU, so that when these situations arise, pretty much everything is spelled out already.
Well, this specific one, the dialogue has started. So we do understand it has to be resolved. We can't just let it randomly settle.
No, but I like the notion of MOU for going forward because then we don't have, you know, then we're not having some other board down the road.
Absolutely.
I was also just more focused on actually being able, if we have to pay the bill right now, do we have the money for it?
We're, we're gonna pay the bill now. Yep.
Because, because out of that 2371835, that's before you take the impact of our interim that we received? Or, or it's just kind of all funny money in there together?
Yeah, yeah, that would be so far that this is a deficit that we are covering. That, that's, that's, that's the deficit after the interim.
Net of the interim.
Net of the interim. Yes.
Thank you. Any more questions? Karen?
So I just want to make sure I understand. So we, with this last line on this last page, with transportation savings, the district will still need to absorb roughly 2.37 million. Meaning we have to come up with 2.37 million.
We are that, those are the sources of deficits. That is what our operating budget is absorbing, correct?
So where are you finding that money from?
Well, we froze the budget in March and we then did a series of, of basically exercises throughout the whole. We, we, we settled a number of deficits and basically pulled funds from, from all the places. And part of the freeze was working to cover these deficits. This is really the reason that we froze and thanks to a lot of that cleanup work, we're kind of, we've pulled the funds. A big piece of it is also churn and salaries and vacancies that happen throughout the year. So a number of the savings is coming from salary savings.
Okay, you're good? I will make your motion. Oh, you are still on this topic? Okay, I'm sorry.
Just real quick Blaze, because I, I know we, we passed the, the summer transfer authorization as part of the consent agenda. And since it's your first time through, just when, when we do come to September, obviously if there were summer transfers, it would be good to have that report.
Definitely. Yep.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to move, move the Old Greenwich Building Committee into the first action item. Do I have a second? All in favor? We need a two-thirds vote. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Old Greenwich is now up. Michael, will you take control of this?
An action item, so I have to make a motion to get it on the floor. So, so I would like, before welcoming the Old Greenwich team here, I'd like to make a motion to recommend a capital budget amendment to the Old Greenwich School renovation project in the amount of $43,154,625.
Would somebody like to second that?
Budget wait, budget amendment for what year?
Oh, 2023, 20, 20, this, this, 23, 24.
The current year or the coming year?
Come, the upcoming year, fiscal year 24.
Would you like to second?
I'm just trying to think if that's right, because if we, yes, fiscal year 24, yeah, because we got, fine, seconded.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, so I'd like to welcome, so as you see here, the many members of the Old Greenwich Building Committee is here. As you heard, I will, I will spare a lengthy introduction because they've got a lot of details to share. The one thing you would, is worth pointing out, you heard the, we celebrated our 50th meeting earlier this week. They're excited to present, we sent out in the board packet, numbers around construction estimates, the, and we're excited to, we wanted to walk through and explain with the help of our architects and Downs Construction, where those estimates came from and the decisions before the board. So with that said, I'm going to turn things over to the, our ever capable Old Greenwich Building Committee Chair, Mr. James Waters.
Come closer, guys. Good, good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the Board of Ed. Tonight, we're thrilled to provide you with an important update on our progress. Bottom line, the Old Greenwich School Building Committee is in position to submit to the OSC GNR by June 30th. We expect to have schematic design complete by June 20, which will include a list of recommended modifications to the ed spec to ensure ADA compliance. We received professional estimates on our schematic design yesterday, which is largely in line with our updates back in February and March. Tonight, I'm, yes, and, and yesterday, the Building Committee unanimously accepted those estimates and guidance to our architect to finalize this schematic design by next week. And tonight, I'm pleased to have our project team here with us. Joining us are Lawrence Rosati of the Morganti Group, our owner's representative, David Stein of Silver Petrosely and Associates, our architect, and Jeff Anderson and Ryan Patrick of Downs Construction Company, our construction manager at risk. We'll be brief and are certainly happy for questions. So let's go to the next slide. Just want to see what's there. Okay, yeah, the, the, those motions are what the Building Committee approved yesterday. Let's go to the next slide, please. That, that, they just articulate the things I just said. Okay, this slide, you guys have seen this slide before. There is a new element of it, which is in a big red box, which you've been given a whole lot more detail. But this is just kind of showing side-by-side comparison. The new information here is a comparison to the estimate we received from Downs. You will see in a red box about two-thirds of the way down the page, this is our, the estimate we received is $540 a square foot. The estimate is $7 million higher than what we discussed before. But I want to note that $540 per square foot is directly in line with renovation comps across Connecticut and in fact is cheaper than many other renovations. As you'll hear, we designed, we've designed a slightly smaller addition, which saves us at least a million dollars. And we've already done quite a bit of value engineering and we'll explain the four main drivers on the increased cost tonight. On cost escalations, we actually did a fairly decent job when we updated things before. And Lawrence, maybe I just ask you to quickly walk the board through the assumptions that we used before and, and, you know, your, your perspective on how we did on that.
So yes, James and the committee asked myself, Morgani, to come up with cost escalations and footnote, number one, 10% in 2021, 15% in 2022, 12 and 23, and 8 and 24. What I did is what went back to the office for those two years, we had six projects that we were working on, reviewed those projects in detail to make the recommendation of the 10% and 15%. And going forward, we tie out with the Downs estimate for the current escalation and the future escalation.
Okay, great. Okay, next, I'm going to turn this, the mic over to David Stein from Silver Petrosely, who's going to show you some of the first images of what we've been up to.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, and good to see everybody again. So the next, I have a few slides here to sort of walk you through the schematic process. We've, as, as we onboarded this project, we, we went through a variety of different solutions and have settled in on one that really hits the main drivers and mission of this project, which is the ADA improvements. And we'll talk about how we solve considerable amount of the entry piece with that, with some of the slides of that coming up. We also, the HVAC improvements, so we'll talk about that enhancement to the overall. Um, we also, uh, the HVAC improvements, so we'll talk about that enhancement to the overall just sort of wellness of that, of the building. And then obviously the classroom expansion, which deals with the overall enrollment projections and just providing the right size for the overall building. So as we're looking at this first ground level floor plan, just to give everyone sort of the orientation, the big blue that you see there is a four classroom addition. We've actually downsized the overall arrangement of this, um, from the original education specs in an effort to be able to save, save money. But what it really does is a classroom that's sort of nestled in the back of the paved area now has a much more compact design and circulation that sort of creates that loop to the school. So the circulation is much better. The main driver of the ADA improvements was to reorient and actually go back to the original entryway, which you'll see some images and maybe we could move on through, um, the next slide, um, or the next few slides. Um, main level and second floor, you could continue on, um, just because I want to be brief and we could always come back to that. And this is probably a good slide to, uh, this is the site plan. So the site plan is the main entry off of the drive aisle. What we are proposing to do is remove the main entry stairs and reorient the primary entryway at that level. We need to do that by actually lowering some of the grade. We're going to remove the plaza. We're going to slope it downward and I'll show you images in a second. But I just want to pause at this slide because it just gives you sort of the orientation from street level. So that sort of semicircle area, which is of the, the existing plaza, you'll see some 3D renderings in a second. Um, now creates a brand new entryway. You see the addition that's located in the back and we are creating an internal courtyard, which now also offers opportunities for more green space. We are removing some of the paved areas and we're reorienting some of the play surfaces and outdoor areas. Uh, next slide, um, and I'll just go through quickly on this one. Just shows the amount of large trees and vegetation that's there. So we have to make sure that we keep that vegetation in place and sort of augment that with the newer design. The next slide of a 3D rendering, and this is really our sort of first pass rendering. Okay, we know we have a lot more work to do as we move through into the design development stage. But the intent of what it's showing you is that that new entryway is now sort of carved down and creating more of a accessible pathway. That entryway is secure, so in concept, it's no different than what we're doing at the Greenwich High School project in terms of creating a clear, concise, open-looking design. Um, and then obviously working with the right vegetation to give a much softer look and balance to the overall piece. As I mentioned, the HVAC, which is a considerable part of the budget, and you'll hear that from our construction team, is that we are going through the entire building and we're removing those existing systems. And we're put inserting energy efficient systems that will fit within the existing building. Somewhat challenging building being over a hundred and twenty years old and a variety of additions that have taken place over the years. But we are striving to be as energy efficient as we can with those systems. So it'll be new heating, air conditioning and proper ventilation along with a fully sprinkled building. And then really right sizing the building with the, uh, classroom addition along with other, uh, improvements, uh, that will go along with it. ADA improvements include bathrooms upgrades, stair improvements, door entry points and a variety of other elements to go along with the building. So with that, James, I think I put, covered the majority and obviously answered questions. So, thank you.
Yeah, let's keep going into the estimate, that's right.
Next slides. Uh, thank you very much, uh, again, Jeff Anderson. I'm with Downs Construction Company, your construction manager for the Old Greenwich School Project. Uh, just quickly, uh, because this is the first time I've been in front of the board. Uh, Downs Construction's been around since nineteen thirty-four. Uh, we do and concentrate all of our work here, uh, from a construction management perspective in the state of Connecticut. Uh, and we have extensive K through twelve experience, OSCG, our funded school construction projects, uh, multiple projects right now that are similar in nature to the Old Greenwich School projects, such as, uh, being multi-phased and occupied throughout construction, which is what we would be dealing with, ultimately, Old Greenwich. So thank you very much. Uh, in terms of the effort that we've undertaken in the recent past, uh, is trying to, uh, take a look at the schematic design drawings developed by David uh, in Silver Petroselli Associates to come up with a budget uh, that takes into account again, our understanding of this type of construction process, uh, the OSCG R requirements, uh, and the trade contractors that ultimately will support, uh, the bidding of this job, uh, down the line. Uh, and we've done that by, um, uh, comparing for you up on the screen here, uh, the original estimates that James, uh, in, uh, Lawrence were talking about. So, uh, originally at twenty-four million, five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and then back in February, an anticipated project cost of thirty-five million, nine, ten. Uh, and we've tried to outline at a high level now, um, of how we got to our ultimate current budget of, uh, hair over forty-three million dollars. It consists of, uh, increased cost escalation. Now that should be being shown as a credit because we are recommending a seven percent escalation for a construction start of June twenty twenty-four. Uh, the estimates from February were recommending eight percent, but our data is indicating for a project that starts from a year now, year from now, excuse me, would be seven percent. Uh, we have some increased scope, um, increased scope, uh, to the extent of what was included originally by, uh, a company called KGND on that twenty-four million dollar budget uh, that is required predominantly related to ADA compliance. Uh, that was not included as part of that original, uh, estimate and process. Uh, we have, uh, as of about a month ago, uh, the data associated with hazmat abatement within the building. Uh, so that is something that was not contemplated at the level, uh, in that original budget. So we're seeing about two point seven million dollars of additional impact because of that scope. Uh, that scope that we see from that report is really standard for a building of this nature. Um, nineteen oh two and additions going all the way up to nineteen ninety-four, if I'm remembering correctly. But the older buildings are, are, uh, typical for the hazmat that we see in all schools, uh, throughout the state of Connecticut. Uh, we also have, uh, extensive phasing costs, of course. As I mentioned before, we're looking at a phased occupied renovation here. Uh, so we have to look at ways to ensure that we are separating ourselves uh, from the students and staff throughout the entire construction process. Um, I don't believe that the original budget contemplated the phasing costs required, uh, to accomplish the scope of work. Um, we have increased contingency, which I'll talk about in a moment. Um, and we have a reduction in soft costs, so we work collectively with James and Jackie, uh, and other members of the committee to look at the soft costs and reduce them, uh, where possible, uh, supporting the overall budget as it sits right now of, uh, forty-three point one million. Next slide. So, um, this is an outline of, of our approach to the estimate, which had three options, A, B, and C. Uh, concentrating on option A, which is the ed specs option, uh, but with the inclusion of, uh, ADA compliance, uh, uh, in additional scope associated with that. Uh, so I'll ask, uh, to go to the next slide. Um, this is really the summary of those options concentrating on the option A column. Uh, I just want to point out some major, uh, significant items, especially contingency. Um, our recommendation at this level of project is that we carry a fifteen percent design and estimating contingency. Uh, because of the early stage that we're still at with drawing development, really slightly pre-schematic design, if you will, there's still a little bit more effort to get to a schematic design stage. Uh, as we progress through the, uh, development of the drawings, getting to design development and then construction documents, that contingency goes away. But our experience shows that at this level, we need to carry that fifteen percent for the things that have not been drawn yet in layman's terms on those early, uh, sets of drawings. We also have a three percent construction contingency that will stay remaining all the way through our ultimate guaranteed maximum price uh, that we submit, uh, to the town once we get to that point, hopefully. Uh, and then we also have a seven percent escalation. So we're saying that there will be an additional seven percent of escalation in the construction market by the time we start construction, uh, hopefully in the summer of twenty twenty-four. Um, in terms of the soft cost, I want to continue with the contingency discussion. In the soft cost number, uh, that we have within this overall budget, there's another five percent of contingency for the owner on the owner's side of the table that marks up our construction hard costs, but also marks up the soft costs. So for any unforeseen conditions down the line, after we progress with the balance of the process, uh, the town has that contingency fund, which is standard and proper, uh, on a project of this nature. So, uh, James had talked, uh, briefly about, uh, the, uh, cost per square foot. Uh, it is in line, and matter of fact, a little bit less than what we're seeing on similar jobs. Uh, in the past month or two, we've reconciled, uh, two projects in the city of Hartford that were closer to renovate as new, that were in the seven hundred to nine hundred dollar per square foot for the renovation of those jobs. So we've gone through, uh, as James also said, uh, earlier, an exhaustive cost management process to the extent that we can at this early stage. We have a little bit more work to do to make sure that we're fine tuning this estimate to the extent that we can. Uh, and we're going to commit to that value management throughout the process to make sure that we are providing the program that's necessary, uh, within the drawings that, uh, uh, Silver Petroselli have provided, but we're also making sure that, uh, it's as economic as possible. Anything else? Yes, I, I should highlight, thanks, James. Um, we have an estimate here that we presented to you that was reconciled with another third party estimator, a company called PM and C that works independently at the same time as us, uh, under Silver Petroselli Associates. And then we got together and did what we call a reconciliation process. So really, the, the board should be looking at this in the town, that this is a reconciled estimate. In other words, it's not just Downs, it's not just PM and C, it's a reconciled estimate of what, uh, the cost of this project uh, should be here in the state of Connecticut and in Greenwich. And if it's another year, uh, we're talking about an additional seven percent, uh, would likely be added to the cost that, that, um, uh, we presented you, to you tonight. Uh, and that's approaching somewhere in approximately the three million dollar range on top of, again, the numbers that we have this evening.
Uh, next slide.
Thank you. Uh, again, introduce, introduce myself. My name is Lawrence. I'm a project exec and the director of pre-construction for the Morgani Group. I was hired and been working for Morgani for thirty years and owner of rep service for the last twenty years. Uh, we were brought on by the building committee in February of this year. Um, in my twenty years, I haven't seen a committee work as hard to make this project come to fruition at this point in, in, uh, at its stage. We've had weekly meetings with the building committee each and every week, weekly design meetings. We've had principals meetings. We've had constant communication with Dan Watson and other members of, of the town of Greenwich. Jen is the principal, has been asked, you know, instrumental in, in, in reviewing the design and approaching it. Um, we've begun the discussions with planning and zoning. I've met with Patrick LaRoe two, three times since February and Doreen is assistant, so that we're familiar with the process of P and Z and starting the pre-P and Z application, hopefully after successful approval of the budget here tonight. Um, we've also begun conversations with Rich, familiar with the sewer department. And I've also, we've also contacted your, uh, building department, the fire department, Chris and John, to, uh, clarify some permit costs. This slide shows, uh, just, it doesn't show the level of effort really, but it shows what's happened since, since, uh, since February, uh, in the month of March. SBNA has presented presentations to the Parent Teachers Association, to the teachers, to the students. Uh, one neighbor session meeting and another neighbor session for the end of June. The schematic design phase, a tremendous effort by Silver Petroselli. David and his team started in roughly March. Uh, the documents were done late May. Uh, Langen was out in early March to do surveys, phase one surveys, as, uh, is noted in the reports and, and Langen was out, uh, as well, along with Silver Petroselli, April tenth. The wing is, the week of spring break, the building was pretty, uh, crowded with design team members, David and the rest of his staff and all his disciplines, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers thoroughly reviewing the project. Dean was out there along with David and, and Barbara, I believe, measuring each and every door for ADA compliance. Uh, Langen had a crew of four out there uncovering all of the unknowns of asbestos, so that when construction starts, it can help, it can go through smoothly once Downs puts together a favor, a phasing plan to accommodate all of the, uh, hazardous materials. Um, we had a reconcile meeting. I was part of the reconcile meeting, as Jeff said, the two independent estimators reviewing and, and coming to agreement on scope and, uh, costs. Um, with the final review of the doc, the documents. Um, the, the bottom half of the chart is going forward with your approval. Uh, the ed specs, as James mentioned, the professional cost estimate that we have. Um, and with approval tonight or in the near future, uh, Downs and SBNA and myself can work through with the rest of the state grant applications. Next slide, please. So this is the full-blown milestone schedule that I created way back at the start of, uh, of the project back in February. Um, it's hard to read, but the top third per se was the previous slide we just talked about. Upon proceeding with the project today and, 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 and granting James the motions that he wishes, the design document phase would start roughly, um, end of June and go through December. Construction document phase would start roughly in January and in April. And then Downs would put it on the street for roughly a June, uh, construction start. So we're ready to go to give Jen the building that she deserves. Thank you.
I love it.
All right, next slide, Mike. Okay, um, so I, I'm just going to pause for a second, uh, and, and I'll, I'll get to the numbers in a second. But, you know, you, you, uh, you can see, I hope you can see here why we hired the team that we hired. Right? This is, this is, this is a team. You, you guys are, you know, I always hear, whoa, how are you work, moving so fast? Your team's working, it's because of the team and it's because of Jackie Welsh, who's our vice chair, who has gone through every single line item on the schematic design and every single number and made sure that it's consistent with what you guys have asked us to do. Okay, and it's because of Jen Benzavango, who's fulfilling four jobs right now uh, at her school and still finds time to go and sit on two hour, uh, design meetings. Um, and, you know, it's, it's incredible. So this slide is intended to be a summary. I'm not going to, you've seen, you already saw this on a previous slide. But I wanted to focus on where the red boxes are. Okay, first thing we're going to be doing at the end of this week is diving into that two point seven eight number of net increased scope. I want to make sure it's necessary. My assumption, based on the building committee's in-depth review, is that it is, but we want to confirm. Second, I want you to make sure you're tracking on the additional three percent of contingency. I told you before, it was, we needed twenty. I'm being told by my team that I need twenty-three. Okay, um, and some of it may go away as we get to, you know, just as we go through the design process. And then finally, the bottom box. Um, based on the funding that has previously been allocated to the project, if construction funding is to be provided, we would need an additional allocation of thirty-nine million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars to be able to submit to the state on June thirty. Um, I do want to reiterate that all of this, everything that we've said assumes we start construction in June twenty twenty-four, which means in sixteen days, we go to the state. If the project is delayed past the June thirty deadline and construction starts in June twenty twenty-five, we should all expect that an additional seven percent escalation will be applied to it and that will bring total project costs, uh, but to forty, forty-five, seven, forty-five, seven, was that what's that number, forty-six, one? To forty-six million, one hundred. So in sixteen days, we're going to be at that point where we're embracing an additional, uh, three million dollars to do this, to this project. And it's already, we've already seen how many extra dollars it, it's cost to date. So, um, next slide, please. Okay. I'm 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 not gonna read these words on the page, but this is an extremely complex project. Okay, we've been working extremely diligently to manage the costs. It is an extremely complex project. I will tell you that we have received extensive community feedback at five separate meetings. People like the design we're proposing. We've incorporated their feedback. And there continues to be strong support for preserving this iconic structure and pursuing a phase renovation that eliminates the need for busing modular classrooms and keeps the kids safe. So we are standing by and ready to proceed based on the board's guidance. We're gonna present our final schematic design for your approval on June, after June twenty. We're ready to assist in reverting to the U S Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights within fifteen days of your approval. We've agreed that the town has agreed to that. We'll be ready to submit our project to the state by June thirty, if construction funding is provided. We plan to start design development and the MI process this summer. And we would be thrilled to begin this renovation as soon as June two thousand and twenty four. So thank you very much, and we're happy for your questions.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. A couple of just background questions. I'll be in by by saying, and I'm gonna have to be the bad guy here. I'm sorry. I'm not prepared to vote tonight. I'm gonna abstain from voting, most likely. So I don't want to get in the way of other people voting, but that's probably where that's where I'm gonna be. So I want to be able to manage everyone's expectations. Some of my questions, and it's complicated why, but I don't want to waste anyone's time with the reasons why. Couple of quick questions. The KG and D, the original budget, I have cost for this before Karen took on the feasibility and and reduced that. What was their their number back then? Do you remember? That was, that's the feasibility KG and you might not know this answer. I should have asked you prior to this.
You mean from?
Oh, you're talking about from the facility master.
Correct.
Your plan, thirty eight, thirty eight million?
Yeah, thirty, about thirty eight million. All right, so originally back then, the estimate, and it was covering the same basic scope that we're working on right now. No. Different scope.
Different scope.
So it's apples to oranges.
There, there's multiple scopes. So one of the things that we've discovered in the in the design conversations that makes things a little more complicated is that the OCR settlement came came after the feasibility. So that's where some of the changes, some of the, some of the, that two, two million comes in to make it ADA compliance. So so that's that's part of the, part of the issue as well, is that.
An additional two.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. So it's thirty eight plus two, so forty it would have been. So forty compared to the forty three we're talking about right now is what the original estimate was years ago. And they could not have taken into consideration the inflationary environment we're going through right now. Thank you. The percentage of the building we're addressing? What is the percentage of the building we're addressing?
The HVAC, we're addressing the entire building, okay? The ADA, we are addressing elements of the entire building. So there are certain doors that are, we are required to address, but we're not addressing every door. I think that's really the main piece of it in terms of its entirety. HVAC and sprinklers are the entire building, yes.
Right. So basically, it's, well, we're not doing the entire building. We're doing, say, including all the things you just mentioned, saying seventy percent of the building, eighty percent, sixty percent, what do we? What do we, because we're leaving some stuff alone, basically.
It's, yeah. Since, since this is an alteration project, we are, we are hitting sort of strategic areas. So it's hard to calculate what we're doing in totality. The HVAC and that, what's that in terms of the percentage of cost? That's probably a good way to look.
Large number. You know, I think that the way to phrase it is, is that there's pockets of work beyond those items that we were just mentioning, HVAC, sprinkler, electrical upgrades, and then focused at the main entrance, focused at that, the new office area, which is part of the main entrance, the the exterior section, of course, the addition, breaking it through. We have an elevator going in, so it's really hard to say what percentage.
So not to hold you to it, but just reach up in the air and pull me out like a percentage, not to hold you to it, ninety percent, sixty percent.
I've got our estimating manager. It might take him a minute if he opened up his computer. I'm kidding. We we can't do that right now.
Okay, that's fair enough. If you can't answer the question.
I would say it's probably about seventy if I had.
Seventy, thank you.
The, just, just to be clear, the things that we are not doing, right, is you, you guys have not authorized us to do anything with the building envelope, right? We're doing, not doing all the windows, what are, or or the, or the, the roof. But I don't think, I think the roof is mostly of the right, a good age, right? What are the other major things we're not doing? Some roof.
You know, I I I don't need the detail, because I just need to make it true, just to understand. But thank you for offering it. I do appreciate that. And a question came up, and this might not, another one might not be able to be answered correctly, but is this project completely remediating any hazardous material that might be within the building a hundred percent, or is there only partial remediation going on?
Only partial.
Maybe can I ask the same percentage, or I thought on the percentage of how much stuff we're mediating and why are we not remediating everything from the building we send our kids to?
The plan right now is not to. There are certain components within the nineteen oh bill, nineteen oh two building, for instance, that are staying. We are only gonna be removing the hazardous materials that are required to accomplish the scope that's been undertaken. Percentage wise, I I honestly can't give you exactly the percentage what's left, but but focused in the nineteen oh two, that would be one of the areas. I don't think we're chasing within existing walls as an example. If there was still pipe insulation buried within a wall, as as a, as a good example. Okay, and
Thank you. All right, sixty percent, that's at least the number we can. And I'm interested, I will be interested in Karen at doing, having done a feasibility myself on JC, you're doing feasibility here. I'd be very interested to hear your thoughts from the delta between the, when you were working on the feasibility of twenty four million versus the forty three million now. And you don't have the answer, just like, I'm curious, just your thoughts.
Well, it's significantly, it it's a good chunk more. And obviously, it would be nice if it was closer, yes, less, right? I can appreciate what the run through that they've gone through with respect to what is the differences between the driving numbers. I know I have some concerns over what's driving the cost. It it feel, if I were to go from just, it feels expensive. But then again, I have to go back to the fact that I'm not an expert in this area. I don't do this for.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's fine. I don't mind being put on the spot. I don't do this for a living. And so while I could say it feels expensive, the fact is I've got five gentlemen all standing behind me at ten thirty at night on a Wednesday telling me that they've done the work and they've gone through it, and this is what it looks like. Particularly the things that we didn't account for, which are driving even more of the cost, or obviously the abatement factor, the phasing factor, the increased cost associated with having the contingency element, which, when you're working at a building that's over a hundred years old, I think that's a good portion to take into account that you're going to have things when you open walls that you probably didn't expect before. I do appreciate the fact that they've already undertaken the abatement portion of this because and and looking at it, because that would have been something that would have been extra. So now we know what we're dealing with. I also think someone should say something on the fact of only a portion of the building is being abated, but that doesn't mean that the rest of it is somehow unsafe for our children to go. So somebody, please say that on the record, or I'm going to hear about it in the papers tomorrow. The other factor that is also being accounted for that I think is helpful, is that, but so overall, I'm, yeah, it's more, but again, we have to do it, we have to get it done right. I think the community has overwhelmingly spoken that they want this building and they want us to fix this building, and something has to be said for that. So we've heard them loud and clear. Yeah, also, you've got to account for, you know, inflation and the fact that things are costing more money and we don't see those numbers generally coming down very quickly. So if this is the price, this is the price.
Thank you, Karen. That was very helpful, Mike. I'm finished. Thank you.
Can can I ask Silver Petricelli or Downs to address your point? I I I mean, what, just from your experience, I mean, what, on the, on the abatement piece?
Well, the town's consultant indicated when we were first reviewing the findings of that report that there was not any, you know, safety concern within the school by what we found.
And and maybe, do you guys, ev- every project that you see, do you fully abate every single bit of asbestos in every school that you've come across?
No, we do not. So as long as the material is essentially contained and concealed and not in any sort of a friable manner, then it is left intact, especially a building that was built at that age, you would be essentially demolished in the entire building. So as long as it's sort of inert and in its, in its state, it's safe to do, and that's common practice throughout, I think, the entire country in terms of how you do that.
Oh, I I was gonna echo Joe that just, I know that we got this just yesterday as the building committee. So there is a lot of information here to kind of dig through, and I have a bunch of questions, so I'm happy to send those. I'm not ready to vote on this tonight, but I also don't want to hold this process up, because as you mentioned, I believe the number was sixteen days. And I may just ask, I I don't know where everybody else stands, and so if others feel the way I do, because I I know the building committee Chair, Mr. Waters, has mentioned wanting to dig a little into some of this as well. And I'd love to be able, since you guys have done such great due diligence to allow that to happen, will we formulate our questions and get those to you? If others feel the way that Joe and I do, maybe there's a possibility that when we get to agenda, we can put, I hate to suggest another meeting next week. But I don't want to hold this project up, but I'm, I I want to make sure we do our due diligence as, to give the time to you as a committee as well.
Well, right, and my understanding is we probably will need one anyway. Because we'll, we'd need to, if we were, if we were talking about June thirtieth, because we will need to revise the expense.
So in an interest of time, I mean, I I know I have a bunch of questions, but I I feel like they may be best since, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of people here to kind of dig in and do them, ask them, you know.
Well, no, I was calling Christine.
Will you be quick, Karen? Because I have a couple of questions, if yours was just a quick point. So go ahead, do that, and then I'll do.
So my one point is, you know, we've been told by the CMS Building Committee, or at least the experts within the Building Committee, that the June thirtieth date isn't necessarily the fixed date, that it just is contingent. It it really is a point of, point for depending upon when we get our reimbursement back on when we file. Is that the same thing here? So is there, is there some magic to this num, to this num date that we don't have with CMS?
For us to file and do construction, to start construction in June of next year, we need to file the application by June thirtieth with the intent to get on to the priority list in December to get authorization to proceed with that funding for next year.
Does that mean we can't start the project, or just we won't get any money back until, you know, a year later? That's what I mean. It does mean, does that eliminate our eligibility for reimbursement if we have to wait to put it in, who missed the June thirty, I'm just double checking. Is it, was it, we heard something different from another, maybe, so I'm just wondering.
The 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 process is that for priority projects, the deadline is June thirtieth. And you need to have full authorization of the funding by the Board of Education and and in your case, the BET, the legislative body, needs to approve the authorization to submit an application by June thirtieth.
So there has been confusion, and we're trying to get clarification from the staff perspective because they just reorganized the Office of DAS, literally like two weeks ago, we got the first email. And and Blaze, feel free to chime in if you can articulate, if I'm not doing a good enough job. We sent them that very question because the CMS Building Committee is under the impression they can submit anytime. In in some regards, that's true. They can submit in September, but then they're not gonna go on the legislative agenda until FY twenty five. And we, you know, I, the conversation that I was in with the building committee members, I do not believe in Greenwich, that without an approved project, that we're gonna be moving forward on a hundred million dollar building. But if you look at some of the language, there is like an emergency clause, and because CMS has a letter saying it's like a five year fix, and we've already burned through one year. We're trying to get clarification, because initially, when we reached out to the office, but there were different people there a few months ago. It was, the conversation was, is there a way to actually get the project number and move forward? We've had different answers. So we were actually, Blaze was working on that today. We don't believe that there is, but I know they're shaking their head. We've had different answers from the office, so we're trying to get something in writing.
And just, this is not my question, but to follow up, David has learned the hard way with the high school entryway project where we've gone to the state twice and seeing the process, and that's a different project, because it's a non-priority project, so it's not subject to this June thirtieth deadline. Anyway, so I've become like mini expert on state reimbursement. So just one thing, thank you guys for a great, could we get the slides sent to us that you should use tonight? Because we did not get them in our board packet, so that was number one, just because that'll also, and I believe in our previous presentation, we had, was there details about option A versus option B versus option C, James, or do we have that somewhere?
Yeah, we, let us send you tonight. We'll send you the the presentation. We'll send you, I think you may have already seen the draft schematic design report, which does include a checklist.
Yeah, remember that, yeah, this is all in a lot of different places right now, so.
Yep.
Okay, a couple of quick questions. The reimbursement rate, while we're talking about the state on this project, is the twenty percent, correct?
We start at twenty, I believe everyone.
Start at twenty as the high point.
And and we believe we're gonna be at fifteen percent.
Effectively, okay, so just to get a sense of what the state reimbursement is gonna be, thank you. Soil testing, has there anything, so what's, I kind of, maybe I missed that in the middle of this, about what kind of soil testing have we done? What are we worried about? Where are we?
Yeah, so we, our consultant is Langon, Langon Engineering out of, well, they have two offices, Stanford and and New Haven, they provided a variety of environmental testing for us. One, they started with a phase one environmental assessment report, which was completed, that did not reveal any any type of concerns to trigger us to look at a phase two environmental. So from that perspective, there's no concerns related to moving on to a further, deeper dive. In terms of in the building, we tested all materials for asbestos, lead, and also any caulking that we saw. We would make presumptive assumptions that we would be removing any of that for PCBs. So we have gone through that overall piece. In terms of soils, we've also done geotechnical engineering borings in the position of the addition. Those have resulted in knowing what we need to do structurally for the addition, but they did not reveal anything that was suspect of environmental or contaminated type of soils from those results.
But we do have wetlands to work around.
Well, we are within a, we are within a, we are within the FEMA flood plain, which we have identified and and pinpointed exactly where that lands as a cross section through our site. So elevation thirteen is the number, and our new addition is gonna be at elevation fourteen, because we have to be effectively one foot above the flood plain. So yes, we also have those soils we identified as part of our geotechnical report, where our groundwater is gonna be, is essentially situated through that site. And we're also looking at correcting or And we're also looking at correcting or further investigating the sanitary lines and the storm sewer lines. As they discharge out onto Sound Beach, because there are some issues related to that. We're hoping to, we are planning to, uh, improve and, um, eliminate those conditions that are there as part of the alterations.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, just in terms of process, Mike, Joe, I think I I agree with Karen and Joe that I think there's a lot to digest. And we clearly have some questions. I would make a suggestion that we have a special meeting next week as as expeditiously as possible. Um, and then to that end, um, and then there's food for thought for next time, whether it's a budget amendment versus an interim request. Is kind of that, that because we don't, because there's nothing budgeted for this project, except for the million dollars for A and E. I I'm not sure. I'm not, I don't know the answer, but I think it's just a food for thought. If we are going to have a vote next week on something, I think it should be the right, the correct vote.
That's, that that's fine. The, uh, obviously this is, uh, we, we, we live in unprecedented times here. We're four budget com- bu- building committees all creating towards, you know, this dead possible deadlines and things. So that's fine. We can figure that out. The, um. We had, um, if we were amending the request in our budget, that's why, like, we had his original request in our budget.
I know, but it's a little different because the budget's now been set by the BET and the RTM.
Yeah.
Might have to be an interim request, as opposed to a budget, I, I, you know. So I think, I think we should be having a discussion or maybe Steve Selfs can figure it out as as the member of the Building Committee. But to figure out what the right, we we don't want to go through all this and not do it properly.
Right.
Uh, Chris- Christina, this is Blaze. I, we, I'll reach out to Town Finance tomorrow for the procedural, uh, question.
Like voice out of the blue, Blaze. Thank you.
I see Cody over there.
Mike, I was just curious about your thoughts on whether we should vote on this tonight, um, and just your thoughts generally on the project.
Yeah, so, so, and I, and I promised, uh, Ms. Costin, um, to to say something. So, so I didn't want to, so the big, um. But yeah, so ob- obviously I'm in favor of the project. So the, the reality here is, um, that, uh, you know, because we're in unprecedented times. We have to think about how best can we, how how best can we move this process forward? And the thinking was putting this number before the board this evening. I understand, um, I understand, um, people's discomfort and the the sense of the meeting is we need to wait. Uh, you know, we're not, we're not going to, we don't want to have a no vote. Um, but with sixteen days left and with an understanding, as we all are well aware of on this board, we do not control the purse springs. The, um, the think, the thinking was that, uh, passing, uh, passing that and passing this number. Um, while then continuing the design process and continuing the work, uh, moving forward in the ed specs. Gives us the best shot, should that this, should this need to, should, because after this. Would have to be, if if this project was going to go forward, the, um, and I think it, I believe strongly that it should. This would have to be a BET conversation. It would have to be an RTM conversation. Um, both of those would be special meetings. There's a lot better chance of all that happening if we, you know, come out and say, hey, we, we're requesting this number now. Than if we wait for a special meeting in a week or two and then request that and then time is, then we're sort of sixteen days, we're talking about seven days. So that's kind of part of our thinking, why we wanted to bring you this number today. Ms. Costa.
Uh, just a couple of questions. So I know that you said there's a checklist about what, uh, what the different options are. I, is there a higher level, um. Explanation of, that you can give us between, you know, what do we, what are we foregoing, um, with any one option? And number two, how significant a revision of the ed specs are we talking? Is it like a lot?
I mean, it, so I'm going to turn this to David because he, he, he helped us conceptualize a perverse, option A versus B versus C. Option A is the ed specs. The one, the additional piece was how do we, uh, cert- certify for OCR? That that this, this school will be compliant with the twenty ten ADA standards. So.
Guys, just to reiterate, so when this project does go through, we have a fifteen-day turnaround with OCR to get it approved. So they're going to kick it back to us.
Or to send it to, to send it to them and and they can, they can review and they can come back to us and say, sorry, guys, it's not. Um, so option A is, is that, um, option B is a little bit more enhanced compliance. And, um, option C is what Silver Petrocelli's view is on, you know, uh, best practice in general. Uh, but option C is not, I will highlight, option C is not renovate as new, right? We, in in none of these options do you have redoing the envelope of the building, redoing all of the windows in the building. Uh, redoing all of the roofs, right? We did, we, we, none of these options are this. So it's just, it's basically a, a good, better, best. And what we're proposing in the forty-three million is a good. But did, would you say it different? No? Okay.
So, um, just a question on the, on the process. So in your opinion. Um. Can, the, the question wasn't really answered. Can you proceed with the project shovel in ground before you get on the list for the state?
You, you proceed, you, you proceed at risk of not getting your full reimbursement.
So in other words, if you are, um, if you are. Filing for reimbursement for certain items and you haven't been approved, the state could essentially say, no, too bad.
Correct. Yeah, it's really, you need to, you need to take the process one step at a time. You can't go through, be fully complete and then ask for reimbursement. You need to take, you need to take those steps one, one at a time.
Uh, I I think that was why we were hoping for Blaze, the voice from the, the screen, would would let us know if he's heard anything differently. From, uh, the State Office of School Construction, perhaps.
Uh, hello, I I don't have any magical words yet. I would, I would say we're in a confusing point. We did reach out to DAS again, as Tony said, because we have kind of two different interpretations. Um, and then CMS, we're also trying to get clarity on the emergency piece of it. Um, hoping to have some interpretation tomorrow. It's been, they have been in significant kind of turnover at their leadership, um, at that, at that specific office. And so it's been very confusing depending on different staff members we've talked to. We, so we're actually trying to meet with the Commissioner of DAS, um, and so hopefully we have some more information very soon.
I have a very simple question, but it, it, I think the board will know it's not always simple. So with the CMS ed spec that we had to redo, um, because the same firm was working on that project, that firm did all the updates. So because this was a different architecture firm that put this one together, are you actually, as the committee, going to do the actual edits on the document? Or does that have to come back to staff and we?
The committee has asked us to take a look at it and to evaluate that language based on option A. So, you know, once, if, if, if option A is decided upon, which it sounds like it is, we will give our opinion on modifications to that.
So my question is actually, who is going to make the modifications in the actual document?
We, uh, I, I, we, we will need to get to the answer on that, obviously. Um. Uh, does anybody have KGND's number? Who had, who has the Word document?
Well, I think we could prob- I could probably get the Word document, but just knowing as we, that when we update ed specs, sometimes it takes longer than we think. And when we're talking about sixteen days, um, it would be great if we could start that process now. And I'm happy to see if I can try to get a Word version. We may have it somewhere.
But we're, we're standing by to help.
We'll, we'll, we'll try to work with you on that. And I agree that getting the word right. I think working with Christina on the high school, we changed it half a dozen times to get it right. So, um, we'll work with you, we'll work with you on that.
Yeah, like, could we just, I mean, just give an example of like, any, if we're changing the ed specs, what would be something? Is it just like square footage on the, like, what do we, like, because I feel like this is really the scope of the project we talked about. So I'm a little confused about what we would need to be revising in our ed specs. Because I felt like they were pretty basic. They weren't, you know, bells and whistles.
I, I.
You don't know the answer.
David's, David's looking up some of the detail, but.
I just want to, for example.
But yeah, exactly. So, so, you know, for, sorry. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's basically, you know, the, the, uh, the architects are going through and saying, wh- what, what do we have to do to be compliant with the twenty ten ADA standards? That process was not conducted, in my understanding, as in the feasibility process. It, it, because there was no complaint at that time. And so now we have to go through and do that. And so, you know, uh, yes, okay, I I mean, of course you were doing things, i- i- I mean, and and I know Ms. Kowalski was, was part of that, that process, as was, um. You know, Jen Benzavango, but you know. There were certainly ADA improvements going to be made in ramps and, and it.
Right, so we just need those specific references in the document in terms of what ADA items we're going to be doing. Okay, that's fine. That's a great example.
We're not, we're not trying to make some big case that we want to dramatically expand.
To know, um, anyway, um, and so when we get the A, B, C, because I got to tell you, you know, not that, not that we all, we're, I think we're all having a little sticker shock. But but the cost is the cost, right? Like, we don't like the cost, but this is what you, you industry professionals, you're getting paid to tell us this what it is. But for example, option A versus option B, there's only about a million three in incremental cost as opposed to A to C. And I think we as a board should also be thinking about. That's why I think to the, to the point about not voting tonight, I think, you know, we say, oh, A, but I think we should be a little thoughtful about bang for the buck on some of the thing. I know, but we just don't have it front. That's my point.
May, may I jump in just one second? Point of order, I guess. Correct. Uh, I believe there's a lot of moving parts here and there's a lot of questions. And I believe that, uh, it's probably likely that it's probably more useful to withdraw your motion and then have a special meeting next week. Uh, judging by availability. So if you'd like to do that or not, we can call you, call the question or withdraw the motion. I think that's what we should do at this point.
No, I don't think you have to withdraw the motion.
You want to vote on it? If you, yeah, if you have to complete the motion, yes, of course. Do you either withdraw it?
I would vote for it, Mike.
We have, we have to follow through with the vote if we do want to leave the motion in place. If you withdraw the motion, we could then shelf any vote until the next meeting.
Joe, can I, just a practical point, I'm thinking about. You know, I, I don't like bureaucrats and I feel like a classic bureaucrat thing is to just layer on more s- stuff that other people have already done. And to me, this is a time where kind of have a people that we rely on and trust. And I'm just thinking in the next week, are there any questions or things we would do or say that would change what the actual outcome would be here? Which was like, are we just doing superfluous things that will end up in the same place? My gut is yes. That's why I would vote on it now.
I have a ton of questions.
But will your questions lead to any substantive change in the outcome?
So, yes.
So I. It's fair and I, and I am, I am sensitive to people's discomfort. I'm also sensitive to, to the, to timeline. So I think, um, it would be helpful, uh, I'm to have a sense of some of the other board members if, uh, what, what we're thinking here. Um, and then I can, I've, I've heard from, I've heard from several, so who, any more time, they missed it.
I mean, I've generally, as you guys know, I've been in support of both Old Greenwich and Central Middle School. I feel like I just received this. I really do want to go through these numbers because I'm not, maybe I am into option B. I'm not sure. But I really, I mean, when I think about the amount of detail we spent on Central Middle School and it's in front of us again, I don't want to give this any less focus. And so to, I'm willing to have a meeting, you know, early next week with this on the agenda and make a, a solid decision at that point.
Laura.
I, I wanted to say, I think I might be into option B because I like the most compliance. Although maybe I don't need new windows or whatever else is in option C. But the other thing I want to lay out on the table is. I knew that the sticker shock would be something that is, um. Is real and it makes me sad. I think I said it to Jen before, that I know the, you know, sticker shock is real and it makes me sad. But I wanted to say, from a practical standpoint, and as you know, I'm the CMS, uh, Building Committee Liaison. I think it's unrealistic to think that these projects won't overlap and they should both have our enthusiastic support.
Miss, um, I guess, okay, so, um, Karen and then Karen and then we'll run it up.
Well, this is just, I, you don't have to answer this now, um, I think, but i- if, if we were asking the difference between option A, B and C. The one other question I was hoping to get an answer to at some point during the week is, one of the things that sort of surprised me was the increased scope of two point seven eight three. Um, required scope added for ADA, um, because one of the biggest things that we had focused on, other than the sewage and 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 other thing was ADA compliance. And it's always my understanding when you do that, it's not just adding a ramp. Um, so I'm kind of surprised that wasn't in our initial, uh, ed specs, uh, full ADA compliance. So if you could just lay out the differences of what's added and if there are things that we're missing, if that's the difference between options A, B and C. Um, just so we have a better understanding of that, like if there's areas that aren't going to be touched, because I'd like to know that. Uh, you don't have to answer that now, obviously, but that was one of the major reasons I was like, I'm not ready to vote. Uh, because I didn't know the differences there between option A and B and C. And that one sentence there kind of hit me in the, uh, kishkas, the scope added for something I thought that was already there, uh, in our specs, that's all.
Yeah.
No, I just want to understand, the Building Committee looked at both A, B and C and decided. And took a vote on which option they wanted? Yes, or no?
Well, we, w- w- we endorse, uh, all of the, the estimates. I, I think what we have been under the impression all along is that, you know, option A is, is what you've asked us to do. So if you were to choose option C, that would be a dramat- a a much more dramatic, uh, revision of the ed spec. Um, and that's not necessarily what we're, what we're asking, that's not what we're asking for.
The challenge is, obviously, as we all know, the Building Committee's charge is to meet the ed specs. So we have this challenge of the ed specs and then the OCR thing, which is why we have this weird option A issue. But then we do have these other concepts of B and C. But, uh, yeah, so it would be appropriate for, for us to say, A, C. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, humbly, I respectfully withdraw my motion. They, um, and I look forward to a, a special meeting conversation and an interview.